Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I will witness the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to call on Dr. Mannen first, please.
Madam President, we have a correction to item 15.3. You have it at your dais. There was a change of date from April 2nd to April 12th. So with that correction, we ask for the agenda to be approved, a motion.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried, thank you. We had no report from closed session actions today. Staff presentation information. We'll start with the report from the Torrance Education Foundation, Ms. Susan Swinburne.
Good evening to everyone. I have two items to report this evening, both to do with our upcoming fundraising dinner, which will take place on April 30th, Saturday. The first is that the James R. Armstrong Award will be awarded this year, after several years hiatus, to Chef Michael Schaefer. He will be with us for the evening and our board felt very strongly that his support for the foundation and his work supporting not only our work with the schools, but also other organizations work with children and children's health merited recognition from Torrance Education Foundation. So I'm happy to report that that will be taking place. And the other announcement I'd like to make is that the old sheriff from Old Torrance will be with us for the event that evening, in the person of Mr. Lee. So those of you who will make time and come to our event and help support Torrance Education Foundation at the dinner will have the opportunity to witness and shake the hand of the sheriff of Torrance.
Yeah, a little hat, I'm wearing a little hat.
Looking forward to that.
I again invite everyone to consider coming. Thank you. Any questions? I always forget to ask for questions. Mrs. Regans.
So we're not going to provide him with the jail to be able to lock people up, are we?
Well, there actually is a jail.
That would happen, yes.
But we're looking for a jailer.
Oh.
Maybe.
Could be.
Well, she does hire.
Interested parties should contact me at my email.
Thank you. Car tickets are still being sold?
Yes, we are still selling car raffle tickets. You may speak to the ambassador at any of our schools, or you can contact us directly at the foundation. Yes, please. Someone's going to go drive away with a beautiful hybrid Lexus SUV. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the report from the Torrance Council of PTAs, Mrs. Michelle von Lebergie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mrs. Deutsch, members of the board, Dr. Mannen and Cabinet. I have some exciting news about our National PTA Reflections, but I just wanted for our audience just to talk a little bit about what Reflections is. National PTA Reflections welcomes all grades and abilities to explore and be involved in the arts. Annually, thousands of students will reflect on a common theme and create original works of art in the categories of dance choreography, film production, literature, music, composition, photography, and visual arts. Torrance Council is very proud and excited to announce that we have a California Award of Excellence winner, which is first place, entry that has been sent on to the National Reflections for judging to represent the entire state of California. Matthew Bang from Towers Elementary School in Visual Arts Special Artist Division. So he won last year. I got to have dinner with him last year at convention. He is so much fun. So I'm looking forward to having some time with him at California State Convention, which is coming up. The theme for the 2016-17 Reflections contest will be "What Is Your Story?" So that's the new one, and we are encouraging students to think about that over the summer and come up with some great projects to think about getting into this contest. So that's really great news. So we're looking forward to seeing if Matthew makes it through Nationals. He didn't make it last year, but he's very excited to represent Torrance. All right. And on Friday evening, many of you were at our annual honorary service award dinner at the Doubletree. This is our chance to recognize honorary service award winners from each of the individual schools and from Torrance Council. So it was a very fun evening, and I really enjoyed it. It was my first one as president, and I always really like those events. So with that, is there any questions? Nope.
Thank you. You did a fabulous job, by the way.
Oh, thank you very much.
Lovely event.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Report by student representative of recognition, Rachel Nakamoto.
Thank you, Mrs. Deutsch. So this week, we've been currently running our ASB general elections for next year's ASB. So we have 20 candidates that are running, which is a lot, which is really good. So we have a big variety of students, which we're really excited about. And this year, we've made a video for all the candidates to kind of explain, like, why are they running for the position, what number they are on the ballot. We're just kind of creating an even playing field, helping out the candidates to make a video because they have such a limited time before voting, because voting is this week on Wednesday and Thursday in the library. And congratulations to, I wanted to point out, that David Michael Payne, who was a current, is a current ASB member, ran unopposed again, or ran opposed this year, and he is going to be in the same position for next year's ASB as spirit and athletics. So he's really excited. He's really into making our school better in spirit with the sports and making our spirit organization greenhouse at school a lot better and just getting the students more involved within the sporting events. And tomorrow, we will have our candidates giving their speeches tomorrow during lunch. So everyone will be able to see the candidates and see what they have to say. And we're also working on Lip Sync, which I mentioned at the last meeting I was at, which is a competition between each grade, and they'll do a satire song and skit for about seven to eight minutes, which will take place on April 1st. And it's a really fun lunchtime event for the students who are performing and speculating. And each class will earn class competition points based on what rank they get for second or third or fourth place. So that's a really fun event for us, and each class right now is having practices after school, early in the mornings on the weekends, trying to get ready for it, because it's a lot of work, a lot of props, and a lot of costumes they have to make. And we also have prom. Prom's coming up on June 4th at the Grove of Anaheim, and some ASB students are going to be taking a visitation this Friday to the Grove. So they're really excited to see it, and once again, it's going to be a Great Gatsby theme, so everyone's really excited for that, too. And we just got our invitations for that, so we're really excited. And then we have Powder Puff coming up, which is a flag football event. The dance team runs it, so it's a fundraiser for them, and it's really fun to play. Kind of scary, though, I'm kind of scared of sports and being, like, run over by people, but it's going to be fun. So we're going to have a meeting tomorrow, so it's going to be a junior-senior event, which is always fun, little friendly competition. And then we have Bluegrass coming up also, which is where all the clubs and the sports will come out, and we'll do a little tour with Callie and Richardson, and all the incoming freshmen will come over, we'll just kind of recruit them for all the clubs and just show them around. They really like it, and we like it, too, because we get to see who's coming in and meet them, and they can meet us. And we're also going to try to do a link crew, which is kind of like freshman-senior buddies. So our class council representatives are working on that for next year. And then we also have AP testing in May, so we're going to have block schedule. A lot of students are preparing for it, they're studying really hard now. We're also going to try to do a little event during the weeks of AP testing. We're going to leave out pencils and erasers for students who just happen to forget that day, if they're a little bit unprepared or nervous. So we're going to keep some chocolate out to help with their nerves, just calm them down and keep them relaxed, because AP testing is kind of scary. And then in June, we will have our third and last class comp, which I might cry, because it's my senior year and I'm going to be sad to leave South. So this last class comp is going to be dance-off, where all the classes are going to compete in a five-minute dance or so, which is really fun. They all come together, once again, they do practices every day, every weekend, as much as possible. It's a lot of time and effort they put in, and the outcome is always so great to see, like, this wonderful big production that they put on for the student body. And then this year in ASB, we did project presentations where each person within ASB came up with a new project, and the projects that got approved and voted in as the best ones that we want to pursue are the, we're going to have a varsity sports mixer, where all the varsity sports will come together, and ASB will plan this mixer, where they get to meet all the other sports and kind of just bond together, because we want to create a bond where they support each other in every sport, to show unity, because as long as the student body sees them bonding together and showing spirit for each other, the student body will follow, too, because that's always nice to see. Just a creation of unity is really good. And within this mixer, we're going to have games for them to play and just kind of do friendly competition and just get to know each other, which will be really fun. And then we also have a tournament coming up later on, I believe in April. It's going to be for the clubs, and the clubs are going to do a friendly competition tournament, where they're going to play games throughout school in different sections of our campus. So it has different speculation within the students. So every student from every corner of school will be able to see the competition at some point, and it's a really good unity for all the clubs on campus, so they stay active. And we're promoting them to be active, and it's going to be creating a spectacle during lunch for fun activities for the clubs and for students who are watching. And then we're going to have a game tournament for students who love playing video games. We're going to bring Game Cubes to school, and some students are going to compete during lunch in the cafeteria. We're going to bring down some projectors, and it's going to have a really fun, like, view for the students, and it's a good lunchtime activity to do for some students who are sitting in the cafeteria. So we're just bringing more things, more activities to school to engage more people and just make school a lot more fun, and lunch to be more engaging for students, too. And we're also going to have a scholar quiz with, like, teams of four. Each person's going to be from a different grade level. And we're trying to work on kids who are in academic decathlon and kids who aren't as necessarily involved in acad. So we're trying to, like, make some fun of, like, a trivia kind of game to involve students and just see how far they can go and how much they know. Some of the middle schools do it, so we're trying to implement it in high school, too, because it's a really fun activity for them. And then we're also trying to work in a color run at school, which is kind of difficult, because the cleanup's kind of hard to do, but some of the Torrance schools do it. We haven't done it yet at South, but we really want to try and implement it, because we see how much fun all the other schools are having, and it's a really fun activity for the students just to run around and, like, paint colors on each other, like, in a white t-shirt. It's a really fun activity, and you get to exercise, too, which is really nice, and have some fun with your friends. So we're trying to see how we're going to clean that up, because that's our main issue right now. And then one of the last activities we're going to do for our seniors is call kisses senior goodbye, where we're going to make little notes for every single senior, which is about 500 or more seniors within our class, and we're going to do a personalized note and give them kisses, and we're going to send them out within the last month of school just saying goodbye. So that'll be really nice.
Nice. Okay. Well, I understand that today's, tonight is your last night, and we actually have a certificate of recognition for being our student representative to the Board of Education, given this 21st day of March 2016. So I'm going to, if you can meet me down there so we could take a photo, and you're also welcome to take your sign. Thank you. Thank you.
You don't know where you're going to school yet, do you, Rachel?
I do. Yes, I'll be going to Westmont College.
Ooh.
Yes, okay. from Negro and Negro, Dr. Stabler.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jeff Nygaard, who is one of the partners for Negro and Negro. They are our external independent auditors. He'll be giving, actually, he'll be commenting on five different audits. The regular audit, which is the general fund and unrestricted funds, he's also, he will also be commenting on both the performance and a fiscal audit for measures Y and Z and measures T and U. Mr. Nygaard?
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here.
You're welcome.
Yes, there are five audits. I'm going to talk about the district-wide audit first, because that's the, by far, the biggest one. And, you know, I'm going to keep this very brief, so I'm not going to go into numbers or anything, so don't worry about falling asleep. The district has a clean audit, say that first. But I like to talk about what an audit is and what an audit isn't, because some people have misconceptions, and they think that an auditor goes in and looks around every nook and cranny in the district to try to find fraud, waste, and abuse. And that's not what an audit is. It's really just an overview of the district's financial statements and general financial condition. In fact, I have an analogy I like to use, which is comparing the audit to going to the doctor for a physical exam. Okay? So you go to the doctor, not because you want to, but because you have to, periodically. The doctor's going to check you over, they might poke and prod and ask them uncomfortable questions, they might run some tests, but at the end of the day, when they give you a clean bill of health, you know they were thorough. And I look at the audit the same way. In fact, you're not going to get the doctor to run cancer tests, or they're not going to run, looking for heart disease, real serious conditions in a physical exam unless they think there's reason to do so. So it's much in the same way as the audit. We look at kind of the overall, general internal controls and accounting practices. We're not really looking for instances of fraud and deception unless there's some indication that something like that's happening. So having said that, like I said, the audit is a clean audit. The accounting practices comply with generally accepted accounting principles, and there are some findings noted in the back, which mostly relate to student body fund accounting. I can tell you, doing over 50 school district audits a year, that's very common. Still needs to be addressed, still needs to be looked at, but the nature of ASB funds are such that there's a lot of money going through them with a lot of different people involved, there's bound to be areas that can be improved. So those are noted in there as well. But overall, a very clean audit, so it's something to be proud of. And this year, as a side note, there was a, again, without boring you with details, there was a very significant new accounting standard that was implemented this year with regards to accounting for and reporting pensions, and the district's in full compliance with that in the audit report as well. So that's all on the regular audit. And then for measures T, U, Y, and Z, I'll address them all at once, because there are similar comments on all of them, so I don't have to repeat myself all the time. But as Dr. Stabler mentioned, there is a financial audit and a performance audit, which is required by the California Constitution. So just very briefly, what's the difference? Well, a financial audit covers the audit of the financial statements of the fund where the bond monies go. It's called the building fund, and the district accounts for those in different sub-funds. So the financial audit is us expressing our opinion on the financial accounting for those funds, and in all four bonds, we're giving what's called an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. So again, the district's reporting of those funds is in compliance with generally accepted accounting principles. So four clean audits there. The performance audit aspect, although it's a very small part of the report itself, is where we spend significantly more time, and that's where we generally go through and look at invoices, and we look at all four bonds separately. We pull a separate sample of expenditures from each one. Now, obviously, measures T and U were very new this year, they were just issued, so there wasn't that much activity to look at. But for all four, we pulled a sample, we looked at expenditures, we looked to make sure they're in compliance with what was approved by the voters, that the district's not spending any money outside of what the voters approved. But we also go beyond that. We look at, we go to the sites, we perform site visits, make sure that what's happening on paper is actually what's happening out there in the field. We look at the procurement process, how vendors are being selected, and that the proper bidding procedures are being followed. So a number of different areas that we look at. And I'm pleased to report, in all four of the bonds, we're giving a clean opinion on those as well for the performance audit piece. So good news all around. I don't have anything exciting to report to you, and that's probably the best thing you want to hear from your auditor. So be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any account you don't want excitement?
No.
Any questions? Mr. Stefan?
I have a question. I just wanted to thank you for checking in and making sure we're doing everything. And I want to thank Dr. Stabler and all the people in that office who are making sure that this is working the way it's supposed to be doing, it's supposed to be working. And then we're going to hear a little bit later from the Oversight Committee as well, so it all rolls into one big no-news-is-good-news package. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right. Good night.
Okay, we're going to move on to the special education and Southwest Special Education Local Plan Area Information Presentation. Dr. Stowe.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We'd like to present some information to you tonight. We have two hard-working, special people with us tonight. We have our Director of Special Education, is Pamela Branch, who is going to kick it off with providing an overview of the special education program and some of the key laws that, as board members, you need to be aware of as it relates to students with special needs. And then following that, we have Dr. Michael Jason, who's the Director of the SELPA. And the SELPA supports local school districts in the South Bay. There's a number of SELPs throughout the state, and he'll go into a little bit more about what is a SELPA and how do they assist and help school districts stay in compliance and make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to help students that have special needs. So I'll begin with introducing Pam Branch, if she can come up.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here. You're welcome.
I'd like to start out with, I tried to make this, it's hard to make special ed 15 minutes in general, but I'm doing my best, so if any questions come up afterwards, feel free to email me and that sort of thing, just to start out. First of all, let me make sure I've got the, okay, make sure I got the right button here. Basically, the Special Ed Department in Torrance Unified is full of a bunch of wonderful people, as those of you that have been around a long time know. What we try to provide to our students is a true culture of caring for the students we serve. One of my favorite sayings is what John Dewey said, when what the best and wisest parent wants for his own child, that must the community want for all its children. And so I'll start with that. That's what we try to do in our department, and I know that's what the district tries to do. Just generally, some, the three main focuses of law in terms of what special education is, is sometimes there's a misperception that special education is somehow an isolated program. It's not meant to be separate. It's meant to supplement regular education programs, not to supplant them. So the three most important laws were back in 1974, the original Education for All Handicapped Act, which is where you'll hear the, well, you may or may not know what the term FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education. That's where that was established many, many years ago. Then you go forward to 1997, it was pretty groundbreaking, the original IDEA, and that's where rules and programs and everything was established and put into federal law, all the mandates came to being. You then fast-forward to 2004, which is the most recent major law, and it was basically extending the IDEA to make it the Individuals with Disabilities Improvement Act, which is just kind of built upon what we already had. With that said, IDEA is a federally funded program, or parts of it, and California, this is just some real basic stuff, California in general received 1.4 billion in 2014-15 for, from federal, for federal funds. The total that Torrance Unified spent in 2014-15 for all special education programs was $52 million. Out of that, we received 4.5 million from the feds, which is only 8.65 of the recommended IDEA funding, federal funding. If IDEA was fully funded, which is supposed to be at 40%, TUSD would have received 20.8 million. That's a difference deficit of 16.3 million in federal funds in 2014-15.
Excuse me, Ms. Branch, would you mind if we have questions based on the slide?
Oh.
If I can answer. Mr. Lee?
Yeah. On this slide, you said the difference is 16.3 million. Is that what we're short? So we're running about, for about 31.3% short of what we're, what we're doing versus what we're being funded for?
From the feds, yeah. This is what I got from Judy Chai. I, no, no, Dr. Stabler might be, that's my understanding from what, the information she gave me for 2014-15, that we were shorted 16.3 million from the feds.
So the deficit in special ed was 16.3 million on a budget of 52?
Of, so, based on federal legislation back in 1974, the federal government promised to pay 40% of the special education costs. We are receiving 8.65% of the cost, not full-funded from the feds.
Have they ever paid 40%?
No.
I don't think so.
No. So the difference between what Congress says would be fully funded at 40%, we're 16.3 million short of that.
Okay, so then, and then the balance of the encroachment is?
State.
52, so in other words, we're getting, so it's 52 million, we're receiving 4.5 million. So the balance is funded through the general, through the general fund, in effect?
It's a combination of general fund.
We can't hear you with that.
It's a combination of general fund money that we have to put in and state funding. Makes up the difference between the 50, the 48 million dollars.
Okay, so what is the, what's the special ed encroachment into the general fund budget?
About 28 million dollars.
About 28 million dollars on a total budget of 52.
52.
So not exact math, but for every dollar we receive, we spend, too?
Roughly.
Okay, good. And then in this budget, does that include due process and all of that? Is that the line item expense in all of this?
Yes, so this includes all special education expenditures, legal fees and everything. Correct.
Legal costs and settlements and everything is part of that 52 million.
For that year.
Card bulbs, toilet paper, the whole nine yards is 52 million.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So just what the IDEA process is in general, and if I'm, if I'm too general, tell me just to move quicker, okay? I, if you already, I was trying to be able to explain this for people that may have not had experiences with it. So before, before the IDEA process or special education process is even considered, LEAs are required to do a process, which is a state, it's a ed code requirement of child find, and that's for every single child, student in your district, age zero to 22. You're required to look to, if you think somebody might be eligible for special services, you're required to identify them. There's different ways, it's interesting, you know, a newborn, how you would do that, but anyway-
but anyway, you're required, it's kind of, it's one of those things, it's a California law, okay? So with that, with child find, even in preschools and before preschools, we are responsible as a district for providing assessment and services to potential students. Before we go that route, though, the schools should be using school-wide intervention programs, which are RTI programs, Response to Intervention. What that can include is just identifying below reading, just as one example. We're not talking about children that are severely disabled with obvious disabilities, very severe things, those are identified at an early age, but school-age children, you're supposed to use classroom interventions before you go to special ed. Then student study teams, same sort of rationale. You work with your general ed teachers, general ed resources, and identify and hopefully at lower grade levels intervene at that point. If that doesn't work, you use the process that the federal government has established through IDEA. That's notifying, you know, assessments are needed, it's a process, assess the student, there's timelines, develop, if the student is eligible, and I'll get into that as part of this thing, the details, but you basically determined what each individual student needs and then place them in the least restrictive environment that you possibly can. And I'll get into the details of that.
What does that mean?
What, least restrictive environment?
Yes.
You don't want to put a, you don't want to put a child in a, an isolated program, for example, because they have a learning disability, you don't want to take, you want to leave them in general ed to the extent they can function in general ed and be successful. So you want them in the least restrictive environment. The least restrictive environment is general ed. And then there's all these, I'll, I'll get into a whole bunch of examples of that.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. So, qualifying for special ed services, there's just, there's two key points to determine if you're eligible. First, you have to fit the definition, which is a, by law, of what a child with a disability is. You can't just say, oh, the child isn't reading at grade level, and I think they're special ed. There's all this criteria. Students must meet the eligibility criteria with one or more of this list. You're right, Tim, this is very small. It looked big when I did it, so I'll read it. One or more of the following, and it's autism, deaf-blindness, deafness, emotional disturbance, hearing impairment, intellectual disability, multiple disabilities, orthopedic impairments, other health impaired, specific learning disability, speech and language impairments, traumatic brain injury, which could obviously happen at any time, and visual impairments. And there's specific criteria that our specialists, you know, will identify a child as having one of those. Next thing is, once they're identified, the IEP process comes into play. An IEP means an Individualized Educational Program. Okay? What that entails in detail is it describes a program that has been specifically designed to meet a specific child or student's unique needs. So it's nothing supposed to be cookie cutter about it. Any child that receives special education and related services has to have an IEP by law. Each IEP has to be designed for that single student, and it must be truly an individualized document. And those of you that have experience in special ed know that sometimes people cut and paste. That's a compliance issue. You need to be individualizing these documents for the student and their, their specific needs. The IEP is a legal document that creates an opportunity for both regular ed and special education. Teachers, parents, school administrators, related services personnel, and students when they're age appropriate, which is sometimes around age 14, but definitely when they're 16 and 18, to work together to improve the results of their education. It's that simple. And it's a legal binding document. So, anything that goes into an IEP, it's, it's considered a legal document, has to be adhered to. Any changes have to be done in the same way, with the same sort of a process and document.
Excuse me, Mr. Lee has a question?
Yeah. Yeah, on the, on the IEPs, how often are they updated?
Well, you have to do them annually, but you can do them anytime there's an issue. Like if a parent has an issue, if the child's not making progress on their goals, you could have an IEP every month. Hopefully, you wouldn't need to, because you would have the goals written, you know, in a way that the child can meet them, but at the least, once a year, annuals, and then a tri-annual, a reevaluation every three years.
Okay, so we have system software, something like that, in place that reminds people to do that?
Well, a case manager, we use SACE, which is a, it's a web-based software. Pretty much most of the state of California uses it with, I think Ventura and LAUSD has their own, LACO has their own, but regular districts use SACE. And it's, it, the case manager, who is the, if it's, if they're in a class, it's a teacher, if they're speech-only, it's a speech pathologist, they have access to SACE, and there's, you can easily pull up, like, when those are due, so can the site administration, they have administrative access to that. So, they have access to when things are due and overdue and that sort of thing.
But then ultimately, it's your department that?
It's, it's the case manager's responsibility.
The case manager, which would be the teacher?
Yes, or specialist.
And the supervisor would be then the principal that would monitor to make sure these were done.
Right. We don't, program specialists and the director don't manage caseloads. They, I mean, they wouldn't have any way to, there's almost 3,000 special ed students in this district.
So, so you don't know if there, somebody is, is a year behind or something like that?
I personally would know that, yeah.
Or your department?
Well, the state would be calling us. They would know, the state monitors that every, when we send our casemiss in on December 1st and on June 30th, anything that's overdue would show up as a huge compliance issue. So, but, but we monitor it. Cindy in my office is a data clerk, and each of the sites monitors that.
Good thinking.
Okay. I have a question. How, how are they identified, the individual students identified if they do have an IEP? I mean, is it, is it the teacher that identifies a student, or is it the parent, or?
It can be anybody that has knowledge of the student, including, it could be a doctor that's, you know, it's, it's, it's anyone that has knowledge of the student. Normally, here, a lot of times, general ed teachers seem to refer, I mean, that's just what I've noticed. Different districts operate differently. A lot of ti, you know, a parent can request it just because they decide to, you know, request it because they're, they want them screened.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Stefan, and then Mrs. Regans.
I want to go back to what Mr. Lee was asking about. So, the case manager at the site or, you know, monitors their particular, their caseload, and they see one's coming up in a week, they don't hit that mark, and so it's like two weeks, three weeks overdue. Is there, and the principal, let's say, misses it too. Is that the, and then, does your data person catch it?
To be honest, casemiss is what catches it. So what you do is, first of all, you're supposed to plan more than a week or two ahead with the caseload, because it, because it takes a long time to get all the information, so, but I, I know what you're saying. So, what would happen is, probably about a month before casemiss is due to the state on December 1st, what's the acronym?
You don't need that.
Oh, okay. I've, I've got a whole list of acronyms.
You don't need any more.
It's the state reporting system, it goes to the state of California for, unless Michael might know the acronym, yes? The acronym for casemiss?
California Management Information.
Yeah. So, all of the districts pile into that, and you have two reporting periods, December 1 and June 30. So, about a month before then, they'll run, well, in fact, I think the SELPA actually runs it too. They run a report, and if anything's overdue, they let us know. And then, we, well, Cindy calls, but we don't really have too many that get that overdue. So, say for example, if, if the IEP was due on September 30th, and somehow, I don't know how this would happen, but say it fell through the cracks, it doesn't put a ding on the district until December 1. If it's not caught by December 1, it goes through as a huge error with the state, big red flags. But that's very rare. I don't think I've ever seen it here.
So, through the SELPA and through the state, they're going to warn you after September 30th, somewhere like, no, we're going to be set a month earlier, they're going to warn you, hey, hey?
Yeah, it's about, it's about a month. Yeah, they, they run, they run these huge things, yeah.
Okay, so it's not, it, okay, got it.
Yeah, it gets caught, but it's, we don't, we only get a handful out of, you know, I think we have 20, almost 2,800 kids in special ed. We might get a few.
Which is about 10% of our population, right?
It's 11 or 12%.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's, yeah, it's high.
Mrs. Regans?
So, actually, the reason I think we're asking about that is because timelines are often issues with a lot of IEPs, at least that's the kind of thing we hear about from parents. And it's somewhat surprising to me that we don't have a handle on that locally, knowing what's coming due and taking responsibility for that.
What do you, I'm not sure.
Well, you're, you're saying that your department as a whole doesn't keep track of it, just the case managers are individually responsible?
No, no, we take care of it at a certain point.
Right.
But we don't case manage 3,000 cases, you know, or 2,800, 2,900. That's what, when you're hired as, when I was a special ed teacher, I was a case manager for 28 students. It was my responsibility to make sure things were done on time.
Sure.
And then my supervisor, who was my principal, you know, I mean, if, I mean, I always did them on time, but if I wasn't, it would be a supervis, a supervisory issue, not my special ed departments. We catch it when it goes, like, to the SELPA, which, the twice-a-year reporting system, that's the only time that our SELPA or our special ed department would become involved. So, no, I think it's, there's a total handle on it at the sites and the principals, to my knowledge, anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Come on? Okay.
So, no, this is the one that's out of order. I know. Okay, I'm going to go this one. It's, I'm going to go back. Okay, so what are designated instructional services? Low incidence, let me see, mine's out of order. Okay. Some, some examples of just designated instructional services are speech and language services, adaptive physical education, occupational therapy, these are things we all offer here in Torrance. Physical therapy, psychological services, parent counseling and training, if it has something to do, it's at benefit to the child. Health and nursing services, vocational education and career development, and recreation services. And, now I'll go backwards, and a continuation of that is low-incidence disability services, which are services for deaf and hard of hearing students, audiological services, services for visually impaired students, just straight vision services, orientation and mobility, instruction and home hospital, although this isn't an offer of fate. This is, the home hospital instruction for special ed is a temporary bridge if the child is, you know, has a doctor's note. Health and nursing services, and these are for students with chronic illnesses or acute health problems, and other specialized services such as interpreters, note-takers, readers, transcribers, and individuals that provide specialized material, like a Braille, all different types of things. Again, it's, it's rarer, but we are obligated to provide that if a student needs it. Okay? Now I'll go forward. Okay. So, the continuum of what a least restrictive environment is for a free and appropriate public education. Okay? So the first thing with, that you, the, the least restrictive environment, back to Mr. Womers' question, is the general education classroom. That's considered by law your least restrictive environment. Then, as, we're going to be going down to the most restrictive. So, the next would be general education classroom with supplemental aid, with supplemental aids and services. Then general education classroom with a resource specialist service, maybe providing assistance for a short amount of the day. General education with related services, depending, again, on the unique needs of that child. Then general education classes with services from special day teachers and supports and other related services, where you have maybe the child's in special day for 60% of the day, and they're going to general ed for electives and music and things like that with the general ed population. Special classes and centers, which we don't have centers here, but county programs will have special centers, they're actually specialized schools for kids that are severely disabled. County programs, which is LACO provides ours here, has a variety of different types of programs for very severe students. Non-public schools for students that maybe LACO doesn't have an exact program that fits the student, but they've, they've created their program by needs that are expressed by different school districts. And then last is residential treatment, which is in, in California, it's basically out of state. You have, you hear about schools in Utah, Florida, those are residential treatment centers for either drugs or severe emotional disturbance, that sort of thing, very, very restrictive. So any of this, this continuum of services can be any combination of those things percentage-wise. So.
Okay, we have, Mrs. Regans first?
Yeah, so our learning centers at each of our elementary schools, at least, and actually, that's our service sort of provider model, how does that fit in with this continuum?
Learning centers are push-in, so it would be general education with supplementary aids and services, or general education with resource specialist services, because they're resource specialists.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Womers?
The residential treatment center, I've been told about, what's it called, South?
South Bay High School?
Yeah, South Bay High School. That's not a residential treatment?
Well, it's, it's a Level 14 facility, it's a psychiatric hospital for, for children or students aged 7th through 12th grade. They're placed there by court order and by, they're, it's different. Where residential treatment centers are, it could be your son or daughter, and they're having, you know, they're suicidal, drug problems, serious, serious, serious stuff though. Those are private places. South Bay High School is a, it's similar, the, the closest thing I can, could equate it to is state hospital, hospitalization.
Okay.
Yeah, like metropolitan, I guess, down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee?
Clearly, you want to keep them in the least restrictive environment, which is in a regular classroom, but at what load of kids with IEPs in a classroom do you then add aids or whatever it may be? In other words, if I'm a teacher and I've got, one teacher's got one person with an IEP, and another teacher's got somebody with seven, it's a very different workload, very different demands on that teacher. So, how do you handle that?
It depends on the needs of the child. My daughter teaches high school English. She has nine, she has classes of 40 to 44. She has one English class, junior English, with nine kids with IEPs. Just because you have an IEP doesn't mean you need an aide. It means you need to have a teacher that's collaborating with the special education, they call them ed specialists now, so that she knows, she differentiates just normally. All you're doing is, it's good teaching, you're differentiating, but if you need assistance with that because of, you know, nine kids, she works with the special ed teacher to modify her presentations and her, her lessons. She has no aids and nine children with IEPs. So it depends. If you have a behavior issue, that's a different, that, that's why I'm saying, an IEP doesn't drive how many paras you get. It's the, it's the plan you've come up for the child and the needs, the unique needs of the child.
So we have no set ratio?
If you have a severe class, oh, sorry. If you have a, if you have a moderate, severe class, it depends on the kids. If you have medically fragile kids that have a variety of needs, you have hoialifts, you have diaper changes, you would need more hands, you know, to, to serve, make, to, to serve the needs of those children. But what, which you, in this district, I believe most districts have a policy, if you have moderate, severe classes, they give the one teacher two classroom paras to assist them in the classroom. That's different than a one-on-one aide.
Okay, but in a regular, general ed classroom, in fifth grade, would, do we try to, I don't know, maybe a bad word, but space the kids out so they're evenly placed, so that the workloads stay, you know? In other words, I'm just thinking, if, if you've got the bad luck of the draw, and you got, you know, 28 kids, and 14 of them have IEPs, but your next-door neighbor teacher's got 28 kids and four of them have IEPs, then you've got a whole lot, as we talked about earlier, you know, you've got reports to write, timelines to hit, those kinds of things. How do we handle that?
Well, again, when I was a principal, I didn't.
I'm going to, I'm going to answer this one a bit. So, what, what schools do is they try to cluster students, right? So you don't want half the class to be, have students with IEPs, but, but it also, in many cases, doesn't make sense to have one, when, when maybe you can cluster some, some students that, that need similar services. And, and so, you know, that, that's something at the secondary level that I know is done quite often, is you might have someone that, that because, because of the way they teach, maybe it's more, you know, more amenable to some of the, that, that style fits with, with student needs a certain way. At the elementary schools, they, they'll cluster some as well, you know, so, so it's not 25% of the class.
So it's managed, all we're here is that it's managed, it's, it, it's taken into a consideration, and there's a process for it.
Correct. And, and we're working with the principals on making sure that they're working with their sites and the, and the master schedules at the individual sites to, to look, to look out for, for, for every, every student need. and the, and the master schedules at the individual sites to, to look, to look out for, for every, every student need and balancing that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, here's just a more graphic, it's easier to read. This is what fate placement offers are, basically least restrictive, and it just goes down to what I explained in the previous slides, just easier to read. General ed, general ed with support, learning center, resource specialist program, special day classes, and that could either be a mild, moderate, or moderate severe, two separate types of special day. County programs, here it's Laco, and non-public school programs, and then residential treatment programs, which are most restrictive. Now.
How do we, just jump in here?
Yeah.
Special day county programs and then non-private schools, or non-public schools. I always seem to get those, I mean, I get pretty good at the learning center, and I have the residential treatments facilities out of state, I understand that. But in between, we do special day, I assume the county's part of our SELPA, and that's kind of funded that way. And then we've got non-public schools, which I assume we have to pay.
Right.
Who determines where in that continuum a kid goes?
The IEP team. When they meet, and that's all the specialists, depending, again, I can't speak to all in one big, it's really hard because I, I know people like specifics, but that's why it's so important to understand the IEP process. It's unique to the child. So, when the IEP team meets, now psychologists, speech pathologists, OT, whatever, you know, especially if it's an involved kid, a more involved kid, they decide, they decide where the best placement is for the child so that they can get educational benefit from the system.
So, okay, so, so, you know, say a kid would, Asperger's at that end of the spectrum for autism would be somewhere further up this process, and somebody more severe would be further down this process?
Right, and again, it depends on if it's Asperger's with behavioral issues or high function, you know, there's all these, these, these things that enter into it. So, it gets in between, I would say the hardest thing to explain to a layperson is in between the special day, mild, moderate, and to non-public, 'cause residential's kind of cut and dried, wouldn't you say? And it's, and, and the other ones are pretty, they're kids that are very high functioning, maybe have little reading disability, you wouldn't even know anything. But it's those ones in the middle, because you have to take into account everything, and then you have to have a specialized classroom that meet those needs.
Okay, thank you.
And the team decides that.
Mr. Stefan?
Yeah, my experience is all the way through the, the special day classes, teacher, I mean, I have kids that come in and go like that. Beyond that, I, I'm out of the loop, you know, they don't come back and talk to me. I know, when you get to the county, the non-public, I mean, can, can they skip a step? I mean, or is it a hierarchical step?
It's not like it's a recipe, it's, it's just, these are the options that can be provided, and you try, you always try to get them in as high a program as you can. You don't just, like, you wouldn't just make the leap, with some exception, if a child was suicidal with residential treatment, but you wouldn't just go to residential treatment, or just go to a non-public school.
Oh, that I understand.
Yeah.
Like, for example, they could skip county and go to non-public.
A lot of times.
If they thought that was the appropriate.
Right, and a lot of times, it becomes litigious, because the parents have a personal preference, and they don't want a county program, so then the attorneys get involved, and we wind up having to send them to non-public.
Even though the, the team may have disagreed with that?
The, the difference is, non-public and county programs are similar in a lot of ways. There's a lot of similarities. So, if the, there's non-public schools that have opened up to fill the need of that parent that doesn't want to go to a county program, believe it or not. So, they're kind of the same, only one's private and one's Laco. Does that make sense?
One for profit and one doesn't.
And so, they like the landscaping better at one, you know, than the Laco, I mean, it really amounts to things like that sometimes. So, then the team meets, and if there's attorneys involved, that adds another layer to the placement. They're pretty much similar placements, it's just where they're going.
Mr. Womers?
What makes up an IEP team? Obviously, you have a teacher in a classroom, if it's a relatively, I won't use the word minor IEP, but one that doesn't require a lot of care, and the more advanced, more disabilities you have, I assume you draw more people in for, to make up the IEP team. But is it consisted, the teacher, the principal, someone from your office, someone from Dr. Stowe's office, or how does this work?
A normal, okay, again, it's supposed to work with, it depends on the child. So, if you're talking about, and that's okay, you know, like, say it's a mild reading disability, that's a common one. And there is a bunch of behavior problems, they just are struggling, there's a learning disability. You'd have, you have, by law, you have to have a general education teacher that can speak to the general education curriculum at every IP. Special education teacher, so resource teacher in that case. You have to have an administrative designee, so it has to be the principal or someone that they have designated who can speak to the financial aspects of the IEP team. Then you would have, so that could be a vice principal, somebody who has an administrative credential that can, has, is authorized to, if they need an aide, they can say, yeah, well, well, you know, we have this reason, this is our recommendation, you know, it involves funding. So, you don't, a program specialist is therefore difficult, you know, litigious or difficult IEP. So, you wouldn't just, I mean, program specialists can't attend seven hundred IEPs either. So, they, they go to more litigious ones, which I was, I'll get into too. But, so, a normal then IEP, and then psychologists, because that's the person who's assessing, doing all the assessments. So, that's kind of a basic IEP team. Now, if the child has speech problems, which that's common too with little guys, you might have a speech pathologist thrown in there along with the rest of them. It just depends on what the issues are. That's what that whole list of OTs, PTs, it just depends. I've been to IEPs with really severe children when I was in a different county, where there was like seventeen people, all specialists there, 'cause the child was so involved, you know, neurologists, all kinds of people. But the basic IEP at a school site, that would be a pretty good example.
And that's driven by the school site, by the principal at the school site is the one who's ultimately responsible for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I was a principal myself, and I mean, you are the ultimate responsibility. It's hard, because special education has gotten so complex, even in the last five years. It has gotten, every month, there's a new court case, or there's a, you know, the Ninth Circuit is famous for this, and it throws everything, it's like a moving target. So, you've got principals that most people, and I, you know, it's like Dr. Stowe, we talk about it all the time, he did IEPs, but they've gotten more and more and more complex and more litigious. And in the last five years, well, the filing rate for the state of California has tripled in the last five years, statewide. Not, you know, just us, statewide. So, with that said, all those filings, you know, impact the sites. They impact our office, they impact the principals, they impact the teachers, obviously. It's really bad, so.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
One more slide. Okay, so here is us, this is our numbers, as of March first, I did these. So, as of March first, we had two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine kids in Torrance Unified that were identified as eligible for special education services. Out of that, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine, we have, that's eleven to twelve percent of our ADA, which is high, it's very high. Out of that, eighteen hundred and fifty of those kids received speech services, which is sixty-four percent of all those kids get speech, which is high too. Twenty-eight kids total, now, the twenty-eight out of that two thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine are in the deaf and hard of hearing support. That means we contract with Laco and they get services at their school. We have eighty-three students that are in Laco programs, Laco services that are programs, hundred and forty-one that are in MPSs or RTCs. So, we have a hundred and forty-one kids in those, those types of programs. Thirty-three that receive specialized vision services, two hundred and twenty-nine that get adaptive PE, thousand sixty-four that get OT, occupational therapy services, and two hundred getting physical therapy, four hundred and eighty-two get individual counseling, eight hundred and seventy-eight receive counseling and guidance services as part of their IP, eight hundred and eighty-seven get behavioral intervention services, and five get orientation and mobility. So, we, we provide a lot of services.
Excuse me, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, you said eleven to twelve percent is high. Is that high compared to our peers, high?
Compared to other districts of similar size, because it, we're over-identifying kids in special ed. The purpose of RTI is to, is to intervene at grades K through three. It lowers your, your, your special ed referral rate. We got, and I believe, Michael, we, didn't we get, we got called out on our kindergarten and first grade? Yeah, we, we got identified, we just got noticed that we over-identifying kindergarten and first grade from the state, because we were at fifteen percent, we had a fifteen percent rise since two thousand, I think that was for two thousand fourteen, so, yeah.
Who's responsible for the identification?
Well, it's whoever refers. So, if you've got, like, again, a parent or a teacher, general ed teacher, do a lot of referrals, you know, it can, it's whoever is referring at those sites.
Is this a training issue if we're over-identifying?
It's a, my own personal opinion, it's a lot of things, because the sites are overwhelmed with the complexities. My belief is that it's overwhelming, in the last five years, it has become overwhelming to deal with the law, the amount of litigation, and just having students like that, trying to serve them. Parents, you know, want certain things for their kids, so I think it puts pressure on the teachers to look for some other way to serve, help serve the kids.
How does launch figure into that with the early identification and the launch program? Does that lead to over-identification, should we not do launch, or?
Well, I'm an outsider, it's, it's a Cadillac program. It's a very, very highly-staffed program, it's a great preschool. But I think when you have a highly-staffed program, that expectation is that'll continue. It's not that those, the program's great, but it's expensive, and it's, and it's.
Excuse me one second, I would, I would bring you back that we had a launch study done two years ago, which found launch to be a very cost-effective measure for our district. That was, that was a huge report that was completed by an outside group for us in terms of the district as a whole. And it, it most definitely is a great program. If you follow Senator Allen's bill that he is introducing, he is modeling part of that bill based on our launch program for the state of California.
Well, but, but I'm hearing that it's leading to over-identification, which is then getting.
But that's not what, what the report said at all, from, from the outside group that did the report?
Yeah, but intuitively, I would, having toured all the school sites and toured launch, it is, to say it's a Cadillac program is almost an understatement. And having talked to some special ed educators that we have, when they, when they make the transition from launch into kindergarten, it's a stunning change, they're going from a rather, relatively small classroom to, you know, a general, general ed population.
And that's why we've done that orientation piece of utilizing launch teachers to assist in the orientation with students when they start kindergarten. Remember, launch runs a little different schedule. So, that was one of the findings from the, from the launch study that was done, to assist in that movement.
'Cause my knee-jerk as a manager instinct here stems from the, I joined Mr. Lee in the conversation of, is it an education, we do, we need to train our, our teachers and our principals differently? Or at all, I don't know what their training, I've never had that discussion in all my sites, site visits.
Well, Dr. Stowe can speak to that.
Yeah, the, the, what I, what I think is being referred to as the over-identification and why, why the increase in K one, we're, we're attempting, if you remember back to the LCAP from last June, the Local Control Accountability Plan. Now, we have built in a significant amount of money to put together an RTI plan for our early elementary school. And so, students coming from launch have already been identified. But where, where the gap exists is helping teachers work with students who maybe aren't coming to school, come to school with, with those skills ready to read and ready to achieve. And so, the RTI plan that Dr. Kim is leading a committee of almost forty teachers and administrators and special educators on this, this year to develop this plan so that we can use some of our targeted money specifically to help address this, this issue. It's not a secret that we have been keeping. We, we know that, that teachers, especially at those, the early primary grades, are, are struggling in, in, in helping students achieve. And so, we, we're, we've intended to use that money that we get from the state that's targeted for supplemental grant funds to, to help establish a program that's, that's going to be put in place in order to then help students at those early primary grades achieve, which will then in turn reduce the, the early identification of students for special education.
Mrs. Reagan's?
Yeah, actually, you have on this slide the special education services listed as TUSD provided, but then you mentioned that the, is it the hard of hearing and the deaf program as a county?
I just mean, as the, as a district, we provide those.
I just wanted to know which other ones were from the county, obviously, the Laco services are from county.
Yeah.
And I believe the, the orientation mobility services are county also?
Yeah, we, we contract with the county for deaf and hard of hearing specialists, audiologists, we don't hire them. But we hire their people through contract, yeah, and vision also.
And vision.
Vision specialists, yeah. And the, the orientation mobility, 'cause it's kind of rare.
Yeah.
Even for a district our size, yeah, sorry.
They used to actually have the program at North, so, yeah, that's why I was familiar with it, yeah. And actually, my quest, I, I keep thinking, we keep referring to that classroom teacher as really being, first of all, the first intervention person, and then secondly, the person who's gonna refer them often for identification or not. And I'm not sure how much actual education these teachers are getting to have that large of a piece in that process.
The general ed teachers?
Yeah, yeah, it seems like we have an issue with preparing them to do that.
They do now, new teachers receive a lot of training.
It is better now, I have to say, yeah.
But it's, but the, you know, people have been here, it's like everything, you know, things have evolved, so, right. The newer teachers have that training, but it's the ones who haven't, aren't new. I won't say old, 'cause it's, but you know, it's.
Yeah, do you have anything else?
Right, and, no, I, I would agree that, for the most part, many general education teachers don't have the, the training, nor do our administrators. And, and so, what we've done this year, Dr. Jason has, has worked with us, and we've had SELPA staff come out on four or five different occasions to work with both our elementary and secondary administrators on, on a variety of topics. And so, we're continuing to work with the SELPA and continuing to look for opportunities of how do we, how do we help, help the teachers and embed some, some strategy and training on special ed and dealing with students of lots of different needs. It's not just special education, but our limited English students as well as our gifted students, right? So, so really trying to provide differentiated training, or training and differentiation through the mechanism that we have in place with our, the training that we're doing for Common Core and in math and English and, and science as well. So, you know, really not, again, as, as Ms. Branch said earlier, not looking at this as separate, but, but embedded within what we're already doing so that teachers don't see it as separate. That's part of, you know, our goal is, is to help, help people realize that these are our students, and they're, they're our students that, that need something a little different. And so, you know, it's not that they can't learn or won't learn, it's that they haven't got it yet or they need it, need it a little differently. And so, really going to that core philosophy and, and helping people understand that and what they can do to, to help is, is our goal.
And EL impacts special ed too, because there's a lot of misidentification of EL students into special ed. So, if you, if you tackle, that's why it's kind of exciting, the LCAP ability to do this training, because when you, the more you learn about EL, the more you'll see that a lot of those kids are misidentified. They aren't special ed, they're English learners, so that's kind of neat too.
Mr. Stefan?
That, that's an interesting point, I mean, you know, there's a lot of restrictions on, on, on EL kids. I mean, you know, if they're VO one, VO two, they're not gonna qualify, right? I mean, because you, you can attribute it to language.
If it's identified, there's a lot of misidentification, they attribute it to, you know.
Let's forget five oh fours, that thing.
Special ed, yeah.
But if I, if I refer a kid, there's a lot of testing that goes on. I mean, so if I refer a kid, kids, I was, he would just drive me nuts in class or something like that, and I, you know, or he was an EL kid, and I didn't know what I was doing, he said, well, this kid has a problem, you need to, you know, test him. And they do, they come back and they say, he doesn't qualify. And they do. They come back and they say, he doesn't qualify, she doesn't qualify. So even though I'm over, I'm, I'm the culprit and I'm identifying kids who, but it should be stopped at the, at the testing place. You said, no, he doesn't qualify. You get an SSD, but he doesn't qualify for an IEP. And then it ends. And then I gotta go back and suck it up and do what I gotta do. But it, so if they're misidentified, there should be a point where they're identified as not qualifying for that special program. So how, how did they get past, how did they get past that?
I don't know how it's gotten past, because we, I come from Fresno, so we deal with migrant workers, you know. So we're used, this problem's like old news in Fresno as far as the testing. So we did, had bilingual teachers, had bilingual psychologists for that exact reason. So the testing was valid. And so it's not that it...
I'm not talking about the EL kid specific. I'm talking about any kid that I might, as a teacher, misidentify.
Gotcha, okay.
That kid, let's say that kid's just a behavior problem, but I can't handle it. So I, but there's going to be somebody with a test and a lot of bubbles and circles that I gotta fill out on a form. And he's not going to qualify. He doesn't have a high end or a low end.
What happens once you're in special ed is if the parent refuses to sign the IEP, this happens quite a bit since I've gotten here. They refuse to sign the child out, so their last valid IEP becomes a stay put. It's called a stay put IEP. So once you're in, if you refuse to sign your child out, then the district has to file against you.
That implies the kid qualified at the beginning.
Okay, but I thought you said if they, if they're in special ed, why can't you get them?
No, 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 I'm, no, my general ed classroom.
Okay, gotcha.
And I'm just, and he's a behavior problem.
Okay.
And I go, you gotta test the kid. And then we go through, we start the process. But that counselor, that psychologist at the school site is gonna, or the RSP teacher is gonna, no. He, he's got a behavior issue, but no, he doesn't, he's, his scores are high. Are those kids passing through that, that gate and then, then getting identified?
You want me to tell you my experience here?
Here?
Okay. My experience here is when they do not qualify, if the parent has decided they want them in special ed, they tell them, you are not qualified. That's, you know, what our team has, our psych report says. The parent will go and get either an advocate or attorney and request an, an IEE, an independent examination.
Now, who provides that?
We do.
By our pick, or who they pick?
No, it's, it's mutual agreement. So we have lists, we work with the SELPA, and we have lists of people. But there's people that if you want certain qualifications, people tend to know who to go to. That's just the truth of it. So they'll, they'll request an IEE, and then they'll request that the district pay for it. To the tune, it's usually about forty-five hundred dollars. Anywhere between thirty-five and sixty-five hundred, actually.
You don't have a choice?
You can, you can file on the parent, but again, that costs money too. So sometimes it's cheaper to pay for, or more cost effective, to pay for the IEE.
Then you're in the due process.
And due process.
If you file against the parent, then you're in the due process.
You warned me about some of this stuff.
I think we ought to make something really clear here. We're having a discussion about kids who legitimately need assistance. And then we're also having a discussion about finance. And this is not, and these two are getting mixed up and it might be coming out negative, you know. We are looking at the, you know, so I just want to make sure the public knows that it's a...
Yeah.
We totally understand the, the need for a special ed.
Right.
But we also have to understand, you know, the dollar bound. And we have to make sure the right students are getting the right. And the students that don't need it necessarily, they need RTI, they need an intervention teacher, something like that, pull-out program or something like that on a couple days a week to help them catch up, is a totally different kind of scenario.
Yeah.
But it seems, so, okay, so if a kid gets misidentified by me, doesn't qualify, our next, our, our, the issue is now litigious, the litigious environment of, of, of this. I, I work in a less, a moderate, more modest income area, so that may be not so much of a problem. I think it follows that. I assume, that's always been my impression. All right, I'm done.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, let's circle back to that. You said your over identification, which is a problem, the state's brought it up, that you're, we're over identified. And then you just implied that it may be because our parents are more likely to file due process or to file for, not looking back it up, more likely to file for an independent evaluation to dispute the one that we have that says the kid doesn't belong in special ed.
I don't think that's the reason for over identification. I, that's an option. I was answering his question as to what happens if they're, I'm getting confused slightly as to what you guys are asking. So I was answering the question about if somebody isn't, isn't, you know, you do the testing and they're not eligible, what happens?
Yeah.
I don't think parents are more likely or not. I think statewide, parents know their rights and they, they, statewide, if they disagree with the outcome of the assessment, they would file, request an IEE. I don't think it's something that just Torrance parents do.
Okay, but you had said earlier that we run higher than other districts, so that's why I keep drilling down. For over, but you said our eleven to twelve percent is higher than it should be. And you said it would lead to over, over identification, and then you said it was, you, the state came in at your first grade or kindergarten saying we're over identifying.
That's one of the things, when you turn in your casemass, they look at all these, which is what Michael does and his people, and they analyze all the districts. And that's what we received from the state. It said we over identified at kindergarten and first grade. The reason, I don't, I'm just giving you hypotheticals. I don't know factually, you know, I'd have to look at every single case and pull every single case that was identified to see what...
Will we ever figure that out, or will it remain a mystery?
Well, to pull every single case, it's kind of labor intensive, but I think, I think we can look at schools.
But again, here's what I'm trying to get at. I'm in the insurance business. We sell insurance policies. Insurance policies say what's covered and what isn't covered.
Yeah.
And the claims adjusters are audited all the time to make sure they were paying claims that, you know, the gray line is not a penny more, not a penny less. So that's why I'm kind of drilling in this. Because if we're over identifying, the state talks that we're over identifying with kindergarten or first grade, we're going to have them for another ten or eleven or twelve years. And if we're getting one dollar in in revenue to offset for every two dollars we spend, then this is going to be a budgetary concern well into the future. It's almost like, you know, the pension obligations that we have, you know. What you do now is almost minor compared to when it compounds ten or fifteen years later. So that's why I'm drilling down on this, is that, you know, if this was a business and I was running it, this would be exactly where I'd look at it because of the, not this year's cost, but every year's cost going forward. And if it's a change in a trend of fifteen percent or whatever you had said, then does that compound every year? Where does that go? And it, it isn't about the kids that truly need it. It's the, it's the situations where we have them over identified, and then I have less money for everybody else, and I don't have enough money for the kids that truly need it. So that's kind of what I'm trying to drill down here on.
And we, we were just notified very recently, actually, I remember in the last month in putting together this presentation, Dr. Jason had sent some data that we were looking for. And so, you know, in working with the SELPA, I don't, I don't think we can point to a particular case of why these numbers have, have increased. And, and that would require significant investment of, of personnel time that we just quite honestly don't have in the special ed department or in any department to go through and look case by case at, at every single thing and try to determine a, a cause factor for, for, for the increase. But again, we, we are doing, you know, developing this, this RTI plan so we can provide services earlier and more, more, at a more intense level for students that need it. We're, we're using Jump Start Summer School for identified students that, that score below a certain level in, in reading and math in the early, well, in, in all grades. And so there are, there are some things that we're, we're trying to do to get out in front of it. And it's not just this fifteen percent increase. We want to raise the achievement level of all students, regardless of whether they're in special, special education or not. So, you know, that, it doesn't answer your question, because I don't think we, we know the answer to your question as far as why that fifteen percent increase at the, at those two grade levels.
So, but Dr. Stowe, is there any way that, based on what you're proposing now, maybe in the future you can provide us with some form of data that's either, you know, that's going to improve or it's not going to improve? Can, can we see that information if you're launching these now?
I think, excuse me, Madam President, I think certainly they can try to produce that. But so we are, are all on the same page. Based on the numbers that, that I have seen and, and part of the coalition we're involved with, special education costs across the state are increasing at nine percent per year. So that's the average in, in the state of California. The problem from a financial standpoint is with the increased cost of stores and pears and the increased cost of special education at about nine. You're going to see that those discretionary dollars are really going to be taken up paying for those particular items. Now, that's something that we're seeing statewide financially. The, the other piece, even though it, it may be difficult to understand and a piece that we're, we're going to be involved with, with school services, is there are no comparative data available. So when it comes to, let's choose occupational therapy, to do a comparison of what's the cost of a child for occupational therapy here versus the cost of an occupational therapist in San Francisco, does not exist. So we are actually trying to work on some mathematical models, taking into consideration geographical differences and cost differences to be able to do some of that work. So what we can tell you is that right now, the average cost for a special education student in California is twenty-two thousand dollars. Based on the numbers that I have, the average cost in TUSD is just about twenty-two thousand dollars per student. So we're, we're just about smack on. Oh, we're about twenty, Dr. Stowe told me. So we're a little lower than the statewide average right now, per cost, per student. But it is so individualized that it's very difficult to develop mathematical models.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mannan. You may continue.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stefan?
No, 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 I thought you were looking at me, because I was going to...
Okay. And then just to, to reiterate, these are, it took me, some of these names, I just, I wasn't sure if all of you were familiar with the acronyms that Torrance has given to, to just some basic programs, which is just, you know, you have general education, general education with push-in that we talked about, learning center model, and then the special day, day classes, which are mild, moderate classes. What we have is, we have an ABA, you know, Applied Behavior Analysis is an autism class, High Functioning Autism Class at Riviera. We have, they call it WAVES. It's at Victor, Tides at Torrance High, Tides Two. I don't, and I have the acronym names and I have no idea what those came up with. Okay, the parents get very confused over those two, so I was also. But anyway, those are all, what they basically are, in a nutshell, is they're special day classes that are mild, moderate, diploma-bound kids, okay? Take away the acronyms. And then the special day classes for the moderate severe kids or students. There's STEPS at Arnold, Seaside, CaliMeor, and South High. And then there's autism classes at Arnold, Wood, and Riviera that are for more, more severe kids. And those generally are alternative curriculum, non-diploma-bound. And that doesn't mean when you're a little kid, you can't eventually possibly go to a diploma-bound. But just in general, they're non-diploma-bound kids, just to generalize, which is really hard.
Mr. Wermers?
The learning center, that's not necessarily exclusively for special ed kids, correct?
No, it's exclusive, it's supposed to be special ed kids. There's been instances that there's general ed kids in there, they should not be in there. A, a special education teacher can't teach.
Okay.
General ed kids.
And the STEPS program, that's, you say moderate to severe, having toured these school sites, that's a broad range.
Yes.
Of definition.
See, that's what's so hard about special ed classes in general. You might have something that's labeled as moderate severe. You could have any range of kids. Like when you go to a county program, you can have a moderate severe class that's medically fragile kids. These kids are severely, you know, physically disabled and, you know, possibly some L issues. But you can see hoyer lifts and nursing beds. It looks like a hospital. You can also have a severe class where you have lower functioning autistic kids that are, you know, low cognitive levels, autism, a plethora of things going on. So what you tend to do is, as a district, a large district, you have to group kids into like services. Because you, just because you, you fall under the legal terminology of moderate severe, doesn't mean all moderate severe kids are even close to each other. So again, it's so individualized. That's why it's hard to compare classes, you know, as to what they are. You go to all those classes, and like I know at, at the high school, they've got four levels and they're, you know, of severe classes. And then when you, you take a parent over there, you, you know, you, you know as a team which one the child or the student will fit in best and get the most benefit out of it. So you, that's what you show the parent. You don't show them a class where the child can't do the work or would be frustrated or that sort of thing, so. But there's still severe classes or moderate severe classes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And this one, how things sometimes happen. So this, I've used this in trainings before where parents, all those people are at the IEP are asking how many people were in an IEP. Well, sometimes there's a lot of people in an IEP. And a parent, especially, well, it doesn't even matter if they're, you have younger kids or older kids. You go to a meeting, it's like when I, my brother's in IT, and he'll start telling me about something having to do with mainframes, and he starts using acronyms, and I honestly don't know what he's talking about. It's almost like a foreign language when he's describing things to me. So IEPs impact people that way. You know, it has nothing to do with our intelligence or anything else. It's a different world. We're talking an education ease, even when we try not to. So it's very intimidating to people, especially when they're worried about their child or, you know, you know, something's not occurring. And, and they, they feel kind of powerless sometimes. So I, I believe that's why a lot of people bring advocates. It's not to be, you know, causing trouble or anything. It's just because they want to feel a little bit empowered sometimes, because they're, they feel outnumbered because of the amount of specialists that are there to, you know, to do good things, but it sometimes doesn't come across that way. So with that said, we're talking about disagreements, and I, I don't want to be negative, I just want to tell you what the process is. But disagreements within our district, how should they be handled? The best way, of course, is you've got your case managers, your school site, you've got your principal, they know the family, they know the child. They, they should resolve, try to resolve to the extent they can at the school site level. If that doesn't work, the parent's unhappy or, or the school's unhappy with, with what the parent is or isn't agreeing with, then that's when the program specialist comes into play. And the program specialist or the special ed director, the parent or the staff can come to those people and say, what shall we do? This is how we, this is our perception, this is their perception, and we should be able to talk about it and try to reach some sort of resolution. The parents that have come to me, we have reached resolution. But for whatever reason, there's also another spot they can go to. Michael has ADR, excellent ADR-trained people at, at the SELPA. Alternate dispute, sorry. See, I don't, I was trying not to really, alternate dispute resolution, folks. And so they're trained in mediation, and they're kind of an outside, they're our SELPA, but the parent can go there, just talk. They'll, they'll come. If I wanted to meet, we could all meet together, come to consensus. And that's available to all of our parents in our SELPA. If none of those work, that's when the parent goes and files a complaint. So they file a complaint, and normally, not always, but sometimes in tandem, there's a due process complaint filed at the same time. So going forward with that, that's ideal. That's what we hope will happen. And then if it doesn't, you have two different types of things go on. There's CDC, California Department of Education, compliance complaints. And it's pretty cut and dried. The complaint alleges a violation of the law. So under the federal law, IDEA or California special education law, two different things they can pull from. Requirements are, it has to be in writing, contain a statement that the LAAs violated a law, regulation under IDEA or California Ed Code. It doesn't have to be proven. They just have to state what they think the problem is. Has to contain facts that support it, identifying information, description of the fact, and the proposed resolution that they're seeking. the proposed resolution that they're seeking. If they're working with an attorney, the attorney writes all this up, and that's normally how people file them. It's a pretty long process to file. So CD investigates within 60 days, and then they come up with a finding, they either find for the district or against the district. If they find against us, they tell us what we need to do to correct it. Just do this, this, and this, that simple. But when people file those complaints, they'll go do due process, because it's, there's timelines involved in all this. So they sometimes file them together, they go do, they file the complaint, and they file for due process, because they're so inundated at the state Office of Administrative Hearings that sometimes it's 60 days to get to resolution, formal resolution, formal mediation, and then to due process. So it's the same thing, you're saying that the districts violated the law, and this is presided over. Resolution sessions, I just do with the parent, they usually have attorneys, so it'll be our attorney, myself, the parent, no, excuse me, just the parent, if they, if we do resolution, but they usually waive resolution. They go to mediation, pretty much as a matter of course here. So they go right to mediation, both attorneys show up, and an administrative hearing judge also shows up from the state. So they mediate the thing, you try to settle it, because hearings are really expensive, just by, it's nothing, no other reason for hours that everybody has to put in. So you can only go back two years, but once somebody files, it opens up the Pandora's Box. They might be filing on something that just happened, but it opens up a two-year window to pick up other things with as you go forward, if you go forward in this process. So hopefully, you can settle it at mediation. If not, you go to hearing, and hearings can last anywhere from five days to eight days, that's eight-hour days, and you're, you've got staff involved, indirect costs, tons of indirect costs from staff time, witnesses, all that sort of stuff. And then you are, the judge has the final say. They come up with the ruling, they say the district needs to do this, or they don't need to do this, and it's a public document, it's posted, it's online.
Excuse me, I believe Mr. Lee has a comment or question?
Yeah. On the CDE complaints, on the, what percentage do we win, what percentage do we lose?
You know, again, it's, I pulled, I had them pull the last 10 years. We get filed on for things like failure to provide records in five days because of staffing problems. We don't have enough staff to provide the type of, our records request, you know, can have five reams of paper, because special ed records are pretty extensive. So I was looking at that, and I gave Dr. Stowe, I, they can only go back 10 years, so I asked him to pull the last 10 years. There was a lot of failure to provide records that we were found out of compliance with. All they do is tell you, you need to tell everybody they need to provide records, that's the remedy. You know, they, you get dinged, but they tell you, all you have to do is do it, so. I don't know percentage-wise, because I haven't, I haven't cranked the numbers, but we can look, we could find out.
I'm just curious, because, I mean, just show, you know, how good we are, maybe how thorough we are with the process or whatever it may be.
Well, again, you can file for a lot of really small things, like failure to provide records in five days is, it doesn't really have a lot to do with services. And so you can be found out of compliance for that, which is a ding, but it's not a financial ding, it's just a ding, you know, that you're out of compliance, and then the remedy and the solution is just to provide them. That's what they'll tell you. Please send an email out and tell your staff to provide the records in five days, per the law, and they quote the law.
I guess what I was trying to drill in at a little bit was, over the last few months, we've seen settlements to law firms from $1,500 to $18,000 and above. So it's more...
Those are old, the ones we're working on now are from 2014, all those settlements. They're pretty much, they file, and it takes a while to come to a settlement. It doesn't just happen within a few months, so a lot of those, because I know which ones are just, we have them every month, it's not just the last few months. Ever since, I've been here a little over a year, I've never not done one monthly. So it's, you're always working about two years back, by the time they go through the system, and it, because they're so inundated at the state, too. So the ones we're doing now are from the late 2000, we're still on 2014 filings.
But is there a risk management kind of, I mean, in other words, if I was looking at this, again, because I have a tendency to look at it as an insurance guy.
Sure.
So I want to manage risk. So, and when I look at this process, it seems to beg for risk management, which means if we do something on the front side.
Right.
Will it then prevent those big payoffs in the past? Or maybe we're tougher on the front side, and then people are less likely to, I remember when I was on the city council, we made a conscious effort to settle nothing. And then, you know, kind of, kind of changed the culture of what the attorneys in the city thought of the city of Torrance to kind of change that cycle. We knew it would cost us money in the short run, but we knew in the long run, we'd save money. So is that, does that enter into this process at all?
To do that, I mean, you'd need a compliance department, because we don't have staff to do that. That's, it's, it's hard to do. I mean, that's Clovis does that.
We've been looking at different models of what could we do that would help us get out in front of things a little bit? And part of it is just collecting data, and that's what we're trying to do now, is collect some information on filings, on issues, and where were we out of compliance on, for example? Or where, when did, where did parents file? And in cases, where did we lose? There are some years, and I don't remember the exact number, but there are some years where we won more than we lost, right, on these CDE filings and due process filings. So, and then other years where we didn't, maybe didn't get as many, or the numbers really vary year to year, there's no trend, there's no one thing that we can point to of why, why these numbers are that high. But that's, we've been, this year, trying to do a lot of data collection so that we can kind of come up with, where are those gaps and what might we do to fill them?
I mean, yeah, something that's compounding at seven or eight percent a year, or nine percent a year. I mean, you know, the train's going down the track, and we've lost the braking handle, and it's just going to go down the road, that's probably not an acceptable solution. So I think we've got to get a fence around this some way, somehow. I mean, if it's going to be nine and we manage it to nine, then that's okay. It's just if you wake up next year and it's 12, and the year after that is 15, the year after that is 20, then we're, it's, it's back to basically, you know, it's bankruptcy by way of special ed.
Right.
Let alone...
And I asked the administrative hearing judges when they, because we see them, you
know, every week, and I'll ask them, are people filing for different things here? And they said, there's, there's kind of almost like filing of the day type thing, you know, certain months, it's one thing, and then it depends on if there's articles about things in the paper. They can't find a pattern either statewide, a pattern of why people are filing. It's, it's just very, it's, it's just exploding all over the state.
Mr. Wermers?
Is it, Dr. Stowe, and both of you, is it something the technology can help with, an effort to pull documents? I've been in your office, I've seen the filing cabinets in your office are enormous and large.
Full of paper.
Could we digitize some of this, I mean, roll Gill under this whole process here?
We've already started that conversation, and the three of us haven't had a chance yet to sit down and talk, but there are some things that we could possibly do.
I agree, Mr. Lee, we need to, you know, more bodies behind desks or something, but also, we could apply some technology solutions to some of this.
Right. And that's something we're looking at, at doing.
Okay. Thank you. Can you continue?
Okay. Where was I? Okay, so I think we did, so there's a difference between the CDE complaint process and due process hearings, because sometimes I hear them mixed up. CDE complaints are different than due process hearings, but they sometimes are tandem and used together. And last, almost, our strengths and challenges for the future. Our strengths are our kids, our students, our parents, our community, it's wonderful. We have an incredibly hard-working, dedicated staff, to the point where it's pretty amazing. And the challenges, it's the increased due process hearings, and then you add, we haven't touched on ADA or OCR, and I won't do that to you tonight, but that's a whole other new exploding area. The severity, there's an increase in the severity of the disabilities, I don't know why exactly, but they're just showing up, more severe kids. Accountability, we need accountability so we can, you know, go forward. Unfunded mandates, Dr. Mannan said it best, it's just, it's statewide. Federal requirements, they keep tightening the requirements, you know, new case law keeps, you know, making it more and more work for us at the district level. Closing the achievement back, you know, gap for all kids, not just special ed kids, for general ed kids, all of them together in one group, educating the general population. And that's what we were talking about, you know, helping our Jan Ed teachers, helping our principals, you know, and helping everybody, you know, just kind of understand that we're not just trying to not support them, there's just a lot of stuff going on. Retaining quality specialists and service providers. Non-competitive salaries, I bring that up because with the takebacks from Laco, there's going to be, we've already got people being recruited out of our district, and it's to neighboring districts. So it's just something to think about, because there's going to be a shortage of special ed teachers again, that I think you probably read about, and so we're going to have shortages of teachers, specialized teachers, shortages of service providers. And it's like a bidding war for people, whether we like it or not. So it's a problem that we, we have to go to contractors if we can't hire them, and that's very expensive, so that's that.
Excuse me, I, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, there's something curious here, I mean, under challenges, you have accountability. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure, it's, it's what you're talking about. I don't know, I don't, we need databases, we need, in one area, technology, and we also need supervision in another, where we have, we have specialists and, you know, as a principal myself, I, it's hard to supervise specialists, because you don't have the area expertise to do the whole thing. So if you have supervisors of specialists, like large groups of specialists, like speech pathology, for example, or psychologists, it is, it supports the sites, because they work on the sites, they're supervised by a site principal, but that, that specialty area has to be, you know, people have to be evaluated in conjunction with somebody who knows the specialty area.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's the accountability.
Thank you.
Okay. And my last quote is just, John Kennedy, I love this one, "Let us think of education as a means of developing our greatest abilities, because in each and every one of us, there's a private hope and dream, which fulfilled can be translated into a benefit for everyone and greater strength for our nation and our district."
Thank you. I know it was a lengthy presentation, and we had a lot of questions, but we appreciate all the time and the effort.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. I'll come back any minute.
Thank you for suffering through us.
Michael's probably mad at me for talking to him.
Right, now I'd like to introduce Dr. Michael Jason, the SALPA Director, who, again, thank you for being here, and does provide a lot of support and data and information for us, as well as staff training from the SALPA to work with our staff.
Okay.
You hit the board button, and you'll get your presentation.
Hi, good evening. And just, I understand that we have students here, we wanted to find out if we should excuse our students now, before the presentation. Okay, can we take a couple, I'm sorry?
I can go outside.
Okay, okay, Dr. Dugl, we'll meet you outside, students, and we'll sign all of the required paperwork.
Or if you want to stay to the end.
You are welcome to stay.
Come on, tough it out. Come on, guys.
Oh, look at that.
It's going to be a while. You have a good evening. Thank you for coming, yes, you too.
Wayne wants to leave.
The whole thing, yes, the whole thing. All right. Thank you. Good night. Bye-bye. Thank you. All right, you may continue.
Sorry about that, Michael.
No problem. Good evening, Madam President, Board, and Dr. Mannan. Michael Jason, the SALPA Director, and I was invited here to just give you an overview of what the SALPA is and how we operate and how we support the different districts within our SALPA. So a SALPA stands for the Special Education Local Plan Area, which a slide or two back, it'll tell you exactly how that was created. It's geographic regions that were developed in 1977 after, as Pam was talking about, the Education for All Handicapped Children's Act was developed. Students that reside in a certain boundary areas, they're guided by a local plan, which you all signed last week or maybe two weeks ago at your last board meeting, so thank you for that. And today, in the state of California, there's about 126 SALPAs, it varies depending on different issues. California State Board of Education created a master plan in 1974, which began to create our SALPAs. And the goal was to equalize educational opportunities for all children, and it was a process of developing programs for students with disabilities specifically. In our SALPA, we have 12 districts currently and 20 charters in the South Bay area. Our current, so a SALPA is guided by an administrative unit. An administrative unit, which I will talk about as I go through the presentation, is really divided into a fiscal component and a program component. That's the easiest way to really kind of understand it. Our fiscal component is the AU, so that means that all the money will go into Landale, and then Landale will disperse it out to everybody else, and we'll talk about how that's dispersed in a few minutes. We do, the administrative unit also does all the state and federal reporting. Pam alluded to a couple of those issues, like, for example, with our California Management Information System. So we report on all the monies we spend, we report on our student populations, et cetera. We do inter-agency collaboration, and I put next to it in parentheses, who's really responsible for it under the administrative unit. So the SALPA staffs of my staff would do the inter-agency collaboration, so we would work with regional centers, Department of Rehabilitation, CCS, Children's Services. We do compliance monitoring, so we look to see, okay, how many IEPs are late, do you have any anomalies, which I'll get to later on, and we provide a lot of staff development. So the administrative unit and the fiscal part, they do the budget planning and review process of any grants that we get, any monies we receive from the state and any federal grants. They physically manage my office and how much money we spend, and that's guided by the governance structure, which I'll explain in just a second. They receive all the, and disperse all the grants and the funding that we receive, so both federal and the state, which is AB 602. The funds are distributed according to our allocation plan, which was in that local plan that was approved a couple of weeks ago with our new administrative unit, and some, and it's based on enrollment within the LEAs. And it depends on our allocation plan, if it's state funding or federal funding, and they're both dispersed different ways. So this is just a model of where all of the money comes from that comes into the SALPA. So about 61% of it comes from state funds, and the rest comes from federal grants and other types of grants and programs that some districts receive and some don't. So if you're an elementary district, for example, you will not see a workability grant, but you might receive a preschool or infant, parts of preschool or infant grants. Okay? So our allocation model for the SALPA is, our state funds are split up 50% based on ADA, with the P2 count being our final count, which is, that's the June count, 25% of your special ed count per your district, and then 25% for high-cost pupils, according to our local plan, is ED and autism. So we divide the AB 602 money up that way. And then the federal funds are either based on ADA or as specified. And so the ADA, the, some of the federal grants, for example, mental health, there's a very specific criteria that, in which you can use them for. The infant discretionary fund, you can only use it for infants, you know? So there's, some of the federal grants have very specific criteria base connected to them to spend the money on. About 2013, 14, they did away with revenue limit, as most people know, and which provided as, an extra pot of money for students that were identified in self-contained classrooms, SDC programs, more than 50% of their day. When the local plan was adopted then, they suggested that districts look at their SDC population... population or students in a special ed classroom for more than 50% of the day, and allocate those funds, because what we found in districts, it looked like your, your contribution from the general fund went way up, when in actuality it didn't, because it was all put in the LCFF model. So we recommended that, that during that time, you just started allocating a little bit more money to special ed as it was before the, it was rolled in. In addition to the allocation model, special ed from year to year, we have a thing called maintenance of effort, or MOE, which basically says, in short, that we cannot spend less money than we spent the year before. So each LEA, each district, each charter school has to provide MOE documentation, and then we, meaning the SALPA, then we provide it to the state, and then they release our Part B funds, which are preschool to 22-year-old funds. Okay?
Excuse me. May I interrupt you for a minute? Mr. Warmer?
This maintenance of effort. Let's say that we figure out what we're doing wrong, and Ms. Branch gets a little additional help, and suddenly we're saving a lot of money on our special ed. That's not allowed?
I will show you what is allowed. There's four, there's four ways that you can reduce MOE.
Oh, sorry about that.
No, no problem. So there's four ways, and these are the only four ways that are allowed to reduce MOE. So you get the voluntary departure of a personnel and hire lower-trained staff, that's one way. So if you have a teacher or an employee that's making $100,000, and you hire somebody at 40, you can reduce your MOE by 60. Okay? Decreasing enrollment of students with disabilities, so you, I think Pam's slide said you have about 2,700 students identified with disabilities. If it goes down to 25, you can subtract the cost of those students. If the termination or the obligation of the district to provide a program for a particular child that has left your jurisdiction, has reached the age in which the obligation is no longer necessary, so they turned 22, or they got a, received a diploma, or they no longer need special education services. Okay? And then the fourth way is if you terminate a costly expenditure, such as you purchased a building or piece of equipment that needed special ed. So those are the only four ways that you're allowed to reduce MOE.
So just getting better at doing this means we, we can't cut our, you know, let's say we save 3%.
You are correct.
Just getting better at this, we, there's, but it's going up by 9% every year, so I guess that we could, right? So I guess we could go ahead and move within that margin, but, tell me, you get why I'm doing this?
Okay. And so all of our allocation funding models are developed through our current governance structure, which was identified in our local plan. The superintendents council, of course, they have the final say on how we allocate, and they help create the policies and approve the policies, the budgets and all the contracts. We have the directors' council, which also give input into how we develop things and the monies that we're going to spend and what's needed, and so they talk to the superintendents, and then we take it in for a vote. The administrative unit, which is the, the SALPA and the fiscal agent. The community advisory committee, which are the, which are the parent groups and community members that, that support and talk about special ed. And then we also take all of that to our finance committee also, if it has to do with allocation of funds. Okay? So the policymaking, so the governance structure is a policymaking body, so if there's any new rules or regulations that the SALPA as a whole needs to create, it's made through the different governance structures, and then ultimately the superintendents have the final say on what needs to be done. It's designated in the local plan, and it is implemented by either districts or my staff. So the AU, which, the AU is, I call it, I'm using it as the fiscal agent in this description, and the SALPA staff, these are some of our joint responsibilities. So we, we both are, the fiscal piece and my staff, we have reporting requirements. So we have the annual budget and service plan, which is approved once a year. Usually, they tell us it's going to be due, and they're going to give us the report in May, but we usually don't get it out to June, because we don't get the right documentation. So it'll probably be, it usually goes out June, by June 30th, if it has to be turned into the state. It's posted in every district. It basically pulls all of our SAC codes, our billing codes, and says, this is how much money you spent on special ed. Okay? Then we have our casemask data, which is our California Special Education Management Information System, which is one of the things that Pam was talking about. So my office runs reports, we send it out to the districts, we send it up to the state. They, we check to see if there aren't any anomalies. So an anomaly might be, you may have an increase of students from one grade to the other, and that could be for several reasons. For example, you could have a group home that moved into your district, and you might end up with 15 students additional in grades five through six that, that are identified as ED. So that might be an anomaly. And so what we're required to do in my office is to look at the, if we get a report that shows a huge increase from one grade to the another, or disability to one, another different disability, then we have to try to figure out, analyze the data a little bit, to see if we can't figure out and give a suggestion to the state as to why we got such an increase. And it could be for, you know, it could be for several different types of reasons. We also collect casemask post-school outcomes, so once a student leaves your district, we have to report to the state after two years where that student is and what that child is doing at this time, or young adult at that point, what they are doing. We collect desired results, developmental profiles, which is, which are for infants and preschoolers. Maintenance of effort, which I already talked about, and data, personnel data report, which just came out today. So all the, the, not only Pam probably hasn't even seen it, because it just came at like 2:30 today. So we have to turn that in, in the next couple of days. We also, the SALPA staff also helps with legal and compliance, so we answer questions, directors call us, superintendents sometimes have questions about different things that are occurring in their districts. We do inter-agency coordination. We manage all, the SAES system, which is what we call our casemask, or California Information System, and the districts use SAES, which is the Special Education Information System, and they feed into one another. We do program evaluations, special education self-review or compliance reviews. It's not called self-reviews anymore, because we don't have to do self-reviews in the state of California. We now do, they're called performance indicator reviews, which we will, some districts will be starting those in the next couple of weeks. And then next year, every district in the state will be doing performance indicator reviews. And we used to be on a four-year cycle, but starting next year, everyone's going to be on the same cycle. And then we do timely and complete reporting to CDE. Okay? With programs, we make sure that there's program availability, so that could be, so we create regionalized programs. That's what, that's one of the outcomes of a SALPA and why SALPAs were created. So if you have low incidence disabilities within your districts, for example, if you have deaf and hard of hearing students, or students with visual impairments, and maybe you only have one or two, then you would, you would buddy up with a neighboring district to create a, create a regionalized program, which is what the SALPA kind of oversees, and, and develop a program for that student, because it would be too costly to do it independently of support. We do curriculum and development, and some cases, looking at, for example, severely handicapped classrooms, that you might need to get a curriculum that is functionally based, and we may help pick, help districts pick that out. We do transition planning, personnel development, so we do a lot of trainings. We make sure that programs are coordinated, so students don't have to go too far away from home. Program specialists, so there's a program specialist, the program specialist's fundings got rolled into the other funding models, but in our SALPA, we have set aside a pot of money to still disperse between all the districts. Okay? And then we do lots of staff development. And I think the next slide shows what we've done in Torrance this year, just, it, just specifically for Torrance. We, we do several trainings throughout the year for SALPA-wide. We have lots of trainings down at the SALPA office, but within Torrance, just this year, we did these trainings specifically for your staff and to, to help train some of your staff members. So we did administrative destiny training, so that's a person that will sit at an IEP and act in a principal-like role. We've done the preschool, the DRDP is the preschool training. We've done a paraeducator training, and I think we have another one coming up shortly. We've done two administrative trainings so far, and we have another administrative training coming up in, sometimes in April, looking at different aspects of what, what was asked of us. And then finally, we have the Community Advisory Committee, which, we actually had a really nice meeting last week, and we worked on, we had a presentation on the ADR, the Alternative Dispute Resolution Process. But we have, we meet probably every other month. We have, I think that we have six events planned this year, but they also look at if we have a local plan that's revised, so they, we have a person on a local plan. Each district hire, or elects two people to be on, at least two people, I should say, to be on the Community Advisory Committee, and I think Torrance has three right now, if I'm not mistaken. And that is what the SALPA is.
Thank you, Dr. Jason.
Do they have questions?
Yes, Mrs. Regans.
Um, just for information here tonight, how is, how are the operations of the SALPA funded? In other words, where does the money come for you guys to run what you're doing?
Okay. So it's a part of the allocation model, and it's taken off the top of the AB 602 funds from all the districts.
And do you currently have the names of the Torrance Community Advisory, advising committee?
I don't off the top of my head, but I will be glad to send those to you right away. Pam, oh, she has one right there. There's, we have one of the reps right there. So I will, I will get all the names and send them to you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dr. Jason? Thank you very much for your time and for staying so long.
Thank you.
It was very informative. Okay, we're going to move on to 8.6, which is the First Annual Report of the Torrance Unified School District Independent Citizens Oversight Committee for the Proposition 39 TNU General Obligation Bonds Fiscal and Performance Audits. Dr. Stabler?
Yes, thank you very much. We have two members of our committee that put together the report tonight, John McGee and Pearl Izuka, and Pearl is going to come up and report. Carl Wather is not able to make it tonight.
Okay, thank you. Hello.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you for the pleasure of my being able to present tonight. Per your formation and direction, the, the Independent Oversight Committee was formed. The first one was formed in February 2009, and the second one was formed in 2015. And our oversight is over the four bonds, Measure Y at 265 million, Measure Z at 90 million, and for Measure T, 144 million, and U, 50 million. So our responsibility per your direction, as well as the regulations of Article 13 of the California Constitution, is to annually report publicly that, to ensure that there's appropriate use of the bond funds. And you have, I believe, a copy of our report, it's 100 pages, and I won't go through all of them at this time, but in that report, there is a section on our roles and responsibilities, there's copies of our minutes of our meetings, as well as every, all the regulations that were to follow, and it's pretty comprehensive in terms of the work we've done over the last year. There are 13 members of our committee, and you have heard the auditor's report in terms of what they found, and we also conclude the same thing. And so I'd like to give our final conclusion of our report. Again, there are two reports that are about 100 pages, and the committee finds, the conclusion for all four bonds is this, that the proceeds of each bond measure were expended only for the purposes set forth in the bond measure, and no bond measure funds were used for any teacher or administrative salaries or other operating expenses. The committee represents a wide diversity of Torrance citizens with different backgrounds and expertise, making the group very effective. A major objective of the committee is to review expenditure reports produced by the district to, A, ensure that the bond proceeds of each bond measure are expended only for the purposes set forth in such bond measure, and B, that no bond proceeds of a bond measure are used for, on teacher or administrative salaries or other operating expense. The committee will continue to track the costs of all projects to monitor this. We look forward to working with the Board of Education and the district, and to continue to monitor our school's construction and modernization projects, and that they proceed in a reasonable, cost-effective manner. And we just also want to take the time to thank Dr. Stabler and Sandy Torano, the Senior Administrative Assistant, for helping our committee. Thank you very much for this presentation.
You're very welcome. And I think we have a question here, Mrs. Regans.
Yeah, hi. Thanks, Pearl, for staying with us for the evening. I understand that as a committee, you folks are visiting a lot of the facilities as the construction goes forward. Could you elaborate a little bit on?
Yes. Almost every meeting, we meet at one of the school sites, and we get to have a walkthrough with the team of folks, and we get to see the progress. And so it's, it's really exciting to watch the progress and just to see all the great work that's going on, yes.
And not just see the bills coming in, et cetera, but see it in action.
See it in action, yes.
3D, what great, thanks.
When I was on the committee, they hadn't started any construction yet, so the only thing we got to do was look at paper.
It's quite exciting now, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, 8.7, Seventh Annual Report of the Torrance Unified School District Independent Citizens Oversight Committee for the Proposition 39, Y and Z General Obligation Bonds Fiscal and Performance Audits. Dr. Stabler?
Yes, I think that was what Pearl was commenting on for both Y and Z and TNU.
Excellent.
She took them all together.
Both of them together, perfect.
We appreciate that, Pearl.
Okay, yes, all right. Okay, so we're going to move on to our public hearing. 9.1, Public Hearing to Increase Developer Fees on New Residential and Commercial/Industrial Development Projects. This is a duly noticed public hearing. Have any written comments been received from any person as to the reportable fees report since March 16, 2016?
No written comments have been received.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there anyone present who wishes to comment on the increase of statutory school fees or the increase of statutory school fees resolution presented for adoption in tonight's Okay, we don't have any, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and announce that the Board will be considering the resolution, accepting this report in item discussion
Just quickly, on that one, because I kind of had some fun with it today.
Uh, Mr. Lee?
Yes. Yeah, there, there's some houses being built that are in the city of Rowling Hills Estates, but in the Torrance Unified School District, and, and I had fun doing the developer fees on an average house size of about 4,500 square feet, and that's going to be about 700, what did I say, $750,000?
Yes.
From the developer fees from the houses up there. They, they didn't really want to change their boundaries, so we're, we're enjoying the benefit of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mrs. Regans?
Yeah, actually, I think we probably should add, accepting the report in, in item discussion action 11.4, the actual item number.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Regans. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on to public hearing and Board's initial response to the CSEA Chapter 19. to the CSEA Chapter 19 Initial Contract Proposal. The CSEA Chapter 19 Initial Contract Proposal was submitted at the regular meeting of the Board of Education held on March 7, 2016. Copies of the proposal have been available in the city libraries and the Human Resources Department for review by the public. A public hearing will be held on the CSEA Chapter 19 Initial Contract Proposal at this time. Is there any public comment related to the CSEA Chapter 19 Initial Contract Proposal? Okay.
Board members and administrative staff, my name is Mark Stevenson. Is there some reason why these negotiations or the actual contract proposal information is not posted on Torrance Unified School District website?
Mr., Dr. Stabler?
Yes, required, uh, Purb requirements are that we put them on the board agenda and do what is called a sunshine proposal, and that's why we have to put them out into the library and post them, so that people have an opportunity at this time to make the responses. These are the requirements of the Public Employee Relations Board.
But why wouldn't it be put on the Torrance Unified School District website for accessibility? Because now somebody has to drive down to the library, and somebody has to drive down to the site in order to pick up a publicly available document.
All I can respond to you, sir, is that those are the requirements of Purb and through the sunshine process. I mean, if the board wanted us to start posting on the website, we could do that. This is not the process we have used.
Okay, when you say Purb, I assume that there's associated California Government Code that requires that?
It's the public, uh, the, uh, Purb is the Public Employee Resources Board, which is the, the group that's responsible for collective bargaining for educational activities within the state of California.
Okay, um, okay. I would assume that there's educational code, or there's a California Government Code that requires that specific authority or agency to go ahead and go through that process. I find it unusual that it's a public document, it's not available on, on the website. Thank you for listening to your concerns.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. The Board of Education looks forward to the continuation of cooperative, good faith contract negotiations with CSEA Chapter 19. The board's initial response is to refer the CSEA Chapter 19 Initial Contract Proposal to the board's representative for negotiations. Public Hearing and Board's Initial Response to the Torrance Unified School District Initial Contract Proposal to CSEA Chapter 19. The TUSD Initial Contract Proposal to CSEA Chapter 19 was submitted at the regular meeting of the Board of Education held on March 7, 2016. Copies of the proposal have been available in the city libraries and the Human Resources Department for review by the public. A public hearing will be held on the TUSD Initial Contract Proposal to CSEA Chapter 19 at this time. Is there any public comment related to the TUSD Initial Contract Proposal to CSEA Chapter 19? Okay, see none. The Board of Education looks forward to the continuation of cooperation, good faith contract negotiations with the CSEA Chapter 19. The board's initial response is to refer to the TUSD Initial Contract Proposal to CSEA Chapter 19 to the board's representative for negotiations. Public Hearing and Board's Initial Response to the Torrance Teachers Association Initial Contract Proposal. The Torrance Teachers Association Initial Contract Proposal was submitted at the regular meeting of the Board of Education held on March 7, 2016. Copies of the proposal have been available in the city libraries and the Human Resources Department for review by the public. A public hearing will be held on the Torrance Teachers Association Initial Contract Proposal at this time. Is there any public comment related to the Torrance Teachers Association Initial Contract Proposal? Hearing none. The Board of Education looks forward to the continuation of cooperative, good faith contract negotiations with Torrance Teachers Association. The board's initial response is to refer to the Teacher, Torrance Teachers Association Initial Contract Proposal to the board's representative for negotiations. Okay, we move on to oral communications. Sorry? The Board of Education welcomes input from the public. In order to discuss district business in an orderly manner, for the privacy and safety of the speakers, and to help staff respond more directly, the board policies require that public presentations to the board comply with certain procedures, including speakers to non-agenda items may address only items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Time allotted for such presentations is limited to three minutes. Total time allotted for public input on non-agenda items is limited to 30 minutes. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another. When addressing the board, speakers are requested to state their name, address, address the president from the podium, and adhere to the applicable time limits. Complaints against employees or students will normally be heard in closed session, and the district's complaint procedure should be followed before discussion with the board. The board may remove disruptive individuals and order the room cleared if necessary. Any person who willfully disturbs any public school meeting is guilty of a misdemeanor. Okay, I have Arthur Shopper.
Good evening, Torrance School Board, members of the audience and the community at large. My name is Arthur Shopper. I'm going to deviate a little bit. It's outrageous. It's 9:45 right now. If I was at the Torrance City Council, the comment, the public comment begins at 7:30. We've got people here now till 9:45. That's outrageous. One courtesy would be to have public comment at the beginning, as many city councils do and school boards. I will just briefly touch on, I haven't been here before, I had a public records request submitted on the results of Common Core, and it was a precipitous drop from one year to the next in the number of students who were taking Algebra I before high school. It's alarming to me that there haven't been a number of people to speak against that issue. I think it deserves more press than it's getting. So I'm going to mention that. Now to the biggest reason why I'm here tonight. I'm here to speak out against Patrick Fury Jr. He currently sits on the Personnel Commission of this school board. I understand that that's an appointment that was made by the union, and I find it interesting that the union head is not here tonight to represent that matter or anything else for the union at this time. Patrick Fury Jr. has been now hit three times. He has been fined twice and admonished a third time for unfair political practices. The Fair Political Practices Commission has already levered a massive fine. It was reported in the Daily Breeze one week ago. I already spoke to the mayor about this matter, and I will be addressing it again, and there will be more residents in the community to speak to that. So I would like this school board to take whatever steps are possible to have Mr. Fury removed from the Personnel Commission. There's been enough problems with misconduct in this city, and it is just, it is just leaving a bad, it's a bad stigma for a city which should be balanced, it should be well-regarded, that we do business well here. As I've mentioned in other forums before, I protest city councils that routinely silence residents and then engage in all sorts of unethical, even immoral and illegal practices financially. And with that, I am speaking to every member of this board. You are elected officials in this city. I expect to see you at the Torrance City Council, speaking out against Patrick Fury Jr. He is sitting on the Traffic Commission there. This man has been hit with massive fines twice, admonished a third time, it's been published in the Daily Breeze, and now the mayor's connected with the two. We need to see more people in this city, not just individual residents, but elected officials too, regardless of what relationships you may or may not have with city employees or if elected officials here or elsewhere. Patrick Fury Jr. needs to be removed from the Personnel Commission in this district as much as he needs to be removed from the Traffic Commission in, under the city council's purview. I understand once again that that was an appointment initially made by the union. I'm asking that this school board needs to be putting pressure on the union rep and all attending staff to have him removed. We deserve better people representing us at all levels of government here in the city of Torrance. Once again, I shouldn't have to be here till 9:45. You should have public comment at the beginning.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shopper, your time is up. Thank you. Dr. Mannan?
Mr. Shopper, just a couple of comments on, on your comment procedurally. You are correct. Mr. Fury was the appointee of CSEA 405. Mr. Shopper, he would need to violate part of the policy of the Personnel Commission to be removed. Also, the commission itself would be the one to remove any member. The school board does not have jurisdiction to do so.
Okay, so they have no power whatsoever to do anything about it? They can't put any pressure or release a censure?
The, the, the school board has no authority on, on removing Personnel Commissioner.
Okay, so what, then what recourse do I have as a member of the community?
Um, you could address the Personnel Commission.
Okay, so when do I do that? Where do I do that? Do they meet here or on?
They do meet here. Do we know the next date of the Personnel Commission, Dr. Liberati?
Couple things. I can refer you to their website. They do have a website, Personnel Commission has their own website. They meet typically the day after we meet. I don't have those dates with me. They meet in the Classified Conference Center, which is next door, to the south of us.
Okay.
If you, if you go to the website, the phone number's there for the Personnel Commission Director, or you can contact me, I'm happy to give you those dates.
Okay, that's.
I have those at my, in my office.
I still think it's worthwhile that for the five of you who are elected officials, not just regarding, I mean, this man has a record now that's gone all over the district, that's gone all over the region, Patrick Fury Jr., not only just from the Personnel Commission, but also from the Traffic Commission. As elected officials, I'm expecting you to be speaking to our city council, because he's on that Traffic Commission. So I have to go to a website to find this information, so I go to the Personnel, I go to that commission, that hearing, and I say, Mr. Fury needs to be removed. But, so who ultimately gets to remove him? Is that, so the two, two votes out of the three says he needs to leave? That's how it works?
That is a public hearing? You're, you're free to attend that hearing? I can't tell you what to say at that hearing? You're free to go.
No, I know what I can or cannot say, but who ultimately decides to, who has the power to remove him then?
The commission.
So two of those three have to go? Pat, you need to go. That's it? That's how it works?
That's the commission.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shopper. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to, we have no discussion action items?
We do have discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, instruction to the?
Do you want to speak?
This still works, right?
Yes, all right.
Yes, this is Orles. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
School board members and administrative staff, my name is Mark Stevenson. I'd just like to see if I can get some clarification, but let me reference a couple of items. But first thing is, in 2005, there was a seminal econometric study by UC Berkeley Program Housing Urban Policy Element, and authored by distinguished professor in professor economics, Dr. Donald, Donald Tener. And it reflects that in a long-term, large sample analysis, that prevailing wages add on average an approximately 25% in, in increase in costs, resulting in inefficient use of taxpayer resources. My first question is in reference to, these are the non-lease, lease-back contracts that the Torrance Unified School District currently has or has gone through. So the first question is for these non-lease, lease-back contracts that the school board approved prior to the recent legal decision, is there a specific performance metrics or any additional information as to why the school board approved these extremely more expensive, union-only contracts when there was actually no legal requirement to, to do that? I'm asking if there's any clarification or any additional information for that, for that policy decision in reference to the use of resources for, for the contractors.
Would Dr. Stabler like to answer that?
I need clarification. You're talking about?
Actually, I'd like to have the school board answer, or members from the school board, because I understand what, what the administrators are going to say already. I'm just trying to find out what the school board members had as their thought process or what their performance indicators that they were looking at that said that basically union contractors would be less expensive and that there would be more resources available for, for building facilities versus using private sector contractors.
I need to take, and the reason I'm asking the question, sir, is because you're referring to a type of contract that requires the district to utilize union labor. We have never, in my existence here in Torrance Unified in the 11 years, entered into such a contract.
Okay, so, so I assume that you're referencing the, your contractor services agreement, and basically there's an Article II, Section 1720, Chapter 1, Part 7, Division 2s, and it's a definition of public works. And my question is, is that basically, that does not seem to apply to Proposition 218, taxpayer-funded or assessed parcel bond, bond issues. So the question there is, you're saying that, you're saying that it's supposed to be a public works type of project, and that it requires you use union contractor?
No, I'm saying we have never entered into a union-only contract in my existence in this district. There are contracts out there in which, certain type of contracts, in which you are required to specifically use union-based labor. This district has never entered into one of those.
So these non-lease, lease-back contracts are not, are not under the prevailing wage requirement?
Yes, they are under prevailing wage. Prevailing wage and union-based contracts are two totally different concepts. Prevailing wage is a state requirement for any, any, under the Public Contracts Code, we have to pay prevailing wage. That is different than us required to use union-based labor, and that's what you're referring to.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Stevenson, time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to 11.2, the appointment to the parent advisory committee as required by Education Code. I need a motion and a second, please.
Seconds.
Okay. That approval be given in compliance with Education Code Sections 52060 and 52063 to appoint the following individuals to serve on the parent advisory committee for the 2015-2016 school year. Veronica Teria, Terro, all pupils' representative. Any discussion? Mrs. Regans?
Um, yeah, what information can you give us, Dr. Mannan, that demonstrates that this?
Dr. Stowe.
Oh, Dr. Stowe?
Doctor Stowe.
That this person could and does represent all pupils in the district?
Veronica is a parent of two students in the North Area. The North Area actually, she, well, she's very involved in, in Carr Elementary School and represents Carr on District Committee for Title I. She also works and volunteers some time in, in here in this building, assisting with some of our programs, including gate testing. She, she does some of the, helps us with some of the paperwork with regard to the gate testing. And so in addition to that, she's, as I told Ms. Deutsch earlier, from the North Area. The North Area does not have currently a representative. If we were to look at the five members of the group, none of them are from the North. And so we felt that, that given her experience at the school, as well as here, serving on committees at the district level, having students at the elementary and middle school level, gives her a, a pretty broad perspective of, of what that committee is being asked to do.
But she is Title I, and we already have a Title I representative, right?
We do, but it doesn't mean that we can't have two, nor does it mean that she can't represent all, all students. Like I said, she works in the gate office and brings that perspective as well.
She could just as well be a Title I representative, though, right?
She could have been, but that, that's filled.
Are all pupils is filled too. We were just saying we wanted additional parent representatives on that advisory committee.
Right. And I, I mean, she, of, if you look at the current, the four current ones, only one of them has parent, has kids at the elementary school, and none of them have kids at the middle school. So she, again, brings, brings the fourth region of town perspective, as well as, you know, that of an elementary and middle school parent. And, and really, when, when looking at the committee, we, we want to make sure, I, one person can't necessarily represent all pupils adequately. So, so I believe that- So I believe that having that diversity on the committee and with her addition really does provide us with a broader perspective than we would have without her.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to, I need a motion and a second to appoint one member to the Torrance Unified School District Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. Dr. Stabler?
Yes, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't get a motion and a second.
Make a motion and we...
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. As we had tonight, we had the presentation by the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. It's a group of 13 members of the community. There are seven members that are from open positions, and there are six very specific unit members. We had come to you about a month ago with two openings, where you were able to fill one, and we had one opening still left, and that was from what we call a taxpayers' association. We put the advertisement back out, and we had three individuals who volunteered and sent in the application to be a taxpayer association member of the district's two independent citizens oversight committee. We have James Adams, Ernest Lee, and R.G. Rick Marshall. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to the board because what you need to do now is discuss and select a single member. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stabler. I'd like to ask for a nomination from the board, please.
I would like to nominate Mr. Lee.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Adams.
Okay, so we have, any other nominations? Okay, so do we go back and forth, or how do we typically do this?
Vote.
Vote? Okay. So, okay, so we have first our nomination of Mr. Ernest Lee. All those in favor for nominating Mr. Lee for the taxpayers' organization, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's four.
Aye.
You're going to make it unanimous? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the Adopt the Resolution Number AS-13-15/16 of the Board of Education of Torrance Unified School District to increase statutory schools' fees imposed on new residential and commercial industrial development projects pursuant to Education Code 17620, developer fees. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Dr. Stabler?
Yes, on a regular basis, the State Allocation Board does some research, and they increase these fees, and once they're increased, then we can come forward and increase the fees for our specific district, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stabler. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Approval of consent agenda as a whole, or do we want to go per...
Students, sections.
Sections?
Yeah, section by section.
Okay, let's go ahead and go general functions consent items?
Make a motion to approve general fund consent items.
Second.
Can we yank 13.6?
13.6, sure.
Okay, make a motion to approve everything but 13.6.
Okay, can I please get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried. Okay, let's move on to 13.6, Adopt Resolution in Support of the Kindergarten through Community College Public Education Facilities Bond Act of 2016. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Lee?
Yeah, this is a tough one for me. It's $9 billion, of which, in the best possible situation, we would get $11 million of. If you proportionately take, and I sat at the office today in the middle of a conference call, so I certainly didn't learn anything there, but I kind of had time to play with the calculator. If you take $11 million as a percentage of the $9 billion, it represents some very long number after a couple of zeros, but, I forgot the notes, but if you look at the percentage of students that we have to the total number of public school students, that's approximately three times more. So really, what we're getting is, if you look at it proportionally, we're getting one-third if it was truly proportional. Okay? You may want to check my math, but that's the way it looked. On a $9 billion bond, I'm sure Mr. Marshall will do the math for me, but on a $9 billion bond at a 4.5% interest rate, the payback is about $600 million a year.
$600 million.
Now, if Prop 98 says that we get roughly 48, 40% of the money that comes to the state, so that means that in a typical year, 40% of 60, that's $240 million a year, if this bond was passed, it would be unable to go to Prop 98 to pay us. So what I'm saying is, is that we have a tendency to sit here and go, "Oh, bitchin', we get $11 million bucks." But when you look at it a little more downstream, you're going, okay, you know, somebody's got to pay this stuff back. And it's a little different than the bonds we do in the city of Torrance, because basically the individual owners of property in the city of Torrance pay that bill. We don't pay it out of our budget. That's what it's paid out of, and the voters, that's why they approved it. This bond comes directly from the first dollar the state gets is used to pay back all those bonds. I'm not going to say I'm not going to vote to support it, but I'd kind of like some math. And my math is, am I correct in my percentages? If we get the $11 million, that's cool, but using kind of my payback formula, what do we, what's it going to cost us? Because we could take $240 million and divide it by our ADA, and we know, when we're in budget times and the state cut $240 million, we knew exactly how many dollars it affected us. Yeah, I did the math. I thought it was around a million bucks, or $750,000 or something, but I may be wrong. But can we see that math, and can you bring this back? And again, I cannot. If I get outvoted, so be it. But I'd kind of like to see the math worked out, because I just, I get a little worried that, you know, when we set up Y, Z, T, and U, it was set up without the expectation of this money. Now granted, it'd be cool to have it, and there's lots of nice things we can do, and if the citizens want to vote it for us, that's cool. But I just, my basic businessman sensibilities is, you've got to pay it back.
Can I, a couple of things. First off, the $11 million is what's left over in what we call our eligibility from a modernization standpoint. Remember with Measure R, we got $70 million out of Measure R that helped bring Measure R up to $118 million. We said all along, Dr. Mannan and I said, probably our eligibility left over for modernization, because this is basically, there's no growth, no new growth in Torrance, so these are all modernization projects. And we've said all along, we're going to get about $11 to $15 million. We've already gotten seven. The $11 million we're talking about is what is called unfunded, because there hasn't been a bond issue. The other thing, this is not Prop 98 dollars. This comes off of the state's debt service outside of the Prop 98 liability. So we will still get Prop 98 dollars even if this is, even if this is...
So it'll just squeeze the other side more?
Yeah, correct, because it comes out of debt service on the other side of the non-98 part.
So basically, we're stealing from that side to get this side.
Well, I don't say stealing. We're getting back what we should have gotten back when we got cut and they didn't. That's a different story.
Well, but it still comes back to somebody's going to pay $600 million a year to repay this bond, and so consequently, you know...
But I, my feeling is, if we can get $11 million from the state to help us with Y and Z and moving forward, we shouldn't leave it on the...
Well, I mean, certainly if the bond passes, we're not going to send the $11 million back to them.
We are not.
No. But I mean, it does smack a little bit of, you know, I gladly pay you tomorrow for a hamburger today, but it's just, you know, I'll sit back, I just kind of have general, when you do the math, you never, you have to figure, I read the whole thing, it never talks about what it's going to cost to repay it. I assumed a 25-year bond, and I assumed 4.5%, and that's $600 million bucks.
Remember, they got into a lot of debt problems during, just before the Great Recession, and now the good thing is they're getting out of that. They're paying off their debt. That's why the governor has not been very supportive of this bond, because he's trying to stay out of the debt, but this...
I mean, it's hard for me to basically agree with anything Jerry Brown did. My father is probably turning over in his grave, because I am, but, you know, it smacks of we cut up all the credit cards and we paid off the bills, and now, you know, Bank of America sent me a new credit card, so I got to bury that. So just, it's just my sensibilities at this point, I, you know...
And I understand that the only concern I have, if Jerry Brown has his way, and this bond is not passed, and he's able to get one in, we probably won't qualify for even half of what we're proposing to get at this time, because there'll be new criteria, and they're going to base it on assessed valuation rather than the current criteria that has to do with the age of the facilities and the current requirements under the State Allocation Board.
Great. I said what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Reagans?
Well, and actually, you guys have already elucidated on, one of my questions was that Governor Brown is not a superfan of this.
Not at all.
And has been, not exactly in opposition, but not supportive, saying that there's other ways to do it, and he'd prefer not to do it this way.
Correct.
Okay. How much of that $11 million eligibility does come from Y and Z?
This is all Y and Z, right?
This is all Y and Z. So in fact, actually, when I made phone calls for Y and Z, we did talk about matches. And in fact, that was a selling point.
If it happened, if it happened, if the budgets were set up, and if it was a...
And in fact, people really liked that idea and thinking that...
You are correct, we did.
Double our community dollars, so, just putting that in there.
You know, just kind of...
Well, no, I appreciate your perspective. Yeah, and you and Jerry Brown agreeing, that's a landmark moment.
I really am.
We have a motion on the floor.
A little conflicted.
Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
Is there someone between that?
You may abstain.
I just will vote no, because I don't have the answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the elementary consent items.
Make a motion to approve the elementary consent items.
Second.
Did you want to speak on this?
Yes.
Well, do you, just, this is, just come on up.
Maybe I should just, I mean, a normal procedure to the city council is that they open up a public discussion, they ask if anybody wants to pull the consent item from the calendar, so that, that way you get public input.
Yeah, this is a whole different, it took me years to figure out the difference.
I'm still trying.
Okay, I understand that portion there. The first thing is, actually, the bonds are up to 40 years. That's one thing, not just 25-year bonds.
Oh, so that's a little less on the payback.
And a little more on the interest.
Oh, yeah.
And then the second portion there is that the proceeds for these bonds and stuff like that are, yes, they can be used for actual facilities like that, but at the same time, they can also be used for refunding or reference to previous bonds. So that was one of the things.
Excuse me, our bonds and the money that we get cannot be used for that. I have to use them for specific modernization purposes. If I don't use them correctly, the state will come and take my money back.
Okay, so I think it's on page three, and it says, "Per Initiatives California Educational Code 101122B2, section proceeds from the sale of bonds issued and sold can be used for the purchase of, can be used, the issued bonds issued to refund any bonds originally issued under this chapter or any previously issued refunding bonds."
I'm just saying, I can't spend it that way.
It's allowing legislatively that specific authority. So it's per 10, 11, 40, and it's on the second sentence on that page there. So that's the reason why I'm bringing this up, because that's a process that's normally presented, is that it's going to be used for specific items, but at the same time, there's usually other levers or procedural levers that allow it to be used for other funding purposes. And my last comment is, I agree with Mr. Lee in reference to Governor Brown, and his comments specifically were, "I'm against the developers' $9 billion bond. It's a blunderbuss effort that promotes spaw and squanders money that would be far better spent in low-income communities." So out of two items, on his RDA, the Regional Development Agency, and this bond, this bond decision or his opposition to it, I agree with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the elementary consent items.
Make a motion to approve elementary consent items.
Second.
We already did that. We need a vote.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
We almost didn't need an S for that one.
Motion carried. Okay, secondary consent items.
Make a motion to approve them all.
Second.
Oh, I don't, okay, never mind, that's understood.
All those, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried. 16, educational services consent items.
Make...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried. We're going to move on to...
The high school book.
Now, that's a long one.
Make a motion...
17, human resources consent items.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried. 18, administrative services consent items.
Make...
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried.
I have one question about 19.
Okay. Mr. Wormers?
This list of change orders is a product of the fact they were not lease-leaseback, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And it's a short answer. I know, it's a longer answer than that, and Don wrinkled his nose when I asked the question, but it's a, a lot of these would be rolled into a lease-leaseback, part of the project.
Yes, they would, they would be part of the contingency.
Because I'm reading through these, and it looks like it's 25 years ago, and I was doing this kind of construction work. Well, we broke that. That wasn't part of the, oh, that was not part of the, oops! And that's what we're seeing, so. And before, under lease-leaseback, it would fall under you guys' umbrella.
Okay, so...
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the administrative services bond consent items.
Okay, thank you. Did I get second?
Somebody did, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, motion carried. Okay, 20 is the information board calendar, just for the public access and it's information only. 21, comments from members of the Board of Education, report from the board's representative to the Southern California Regional Occupational Center, Mrs. Terry Reagans.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. One is that they wanted to make certain that we had sent both the approval of the MOU and the JP amended agreement. Dr. Mannan, both of those have happened, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we've sent both of those. They did have a representative from Chevron at the meeting, who for the fourth year in a row, actually for the fifth year, they've already done it four years, this is the fifth year, that they have donated $50,000 to their engineering programs. And this is specifically to create drone education in three of their engineering classes. So that'll be kind of cool.
Drone, as opposed to drones in Star Wars.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying. The student, there was a student there from Morningside High School, which is an Inglewood Unified School District, who had taken two dental assisting classes and was in a third. She'd also taken American Sign Language. She was actually taking two classes each period at SoCal Rock, and sort of balancing that with her entire full day of classes at Inglewood, at Morningside also. So she was a very busy lady, and will be attending El Camino, and then hopefully going into dentistry at USC, and has a sense that that may be happening for her. We did approve a new adult class fee schedule with some minor increases in some of the classes and some decreases in some of the classes. And I can discuss the rationale for each of those if you're interested, but I actually, in fact, will probably send forward to each of you that fee schedule, just so that you can sort of eyeball it and see what it looks like. But that fee schedule was created by looking at what other schools in the area, in terms But that fee schedule was created by looking at what other schools in the area, in terms of adult schools, classes that are similar we're charging, the hours in the classes, and the amount of cost that each of the programs could manage and not lose students. So, doesn't bear a lot of resemblance to the amount that we're being asked to pay for our students, but we had that discussion, too. And they were all excited about having received their continuing education, or continuing, their CTEIG incentive grant monies to at least have some operating funds to be working with in terms of a budget moving forward, and being able to actually create more than one year on their interim report. So, they feel like they're over a hump in terms of funding.
They can buy green bananas.
I'm not feeling it, but.
They can buy green bananas.
Yeah, I don't know. But that saga continues, as they are trying to make their case for CTE being a worthwhile investment on the part of all of us. And that's it, I have no, actually, anniversary increments for classified folks, but we did actually approve two resolutions, one identifying April 4th to the 8th as a California Adult Education Week, and our adult education director is here. So, thank you, folks, for the work that they do. And April as School Library Month.
That's an awesome one.
And having worked in the library at elementary school for many years, I appreciate the services they are able to offer, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagans. Any comments from members of the Board of Education?
In our Friday memo, Dr. Stabler, you talk about a 7-11 committee, and your words are, if the board is interested in considering the new lease, how would the board determine? I know I'm interested in considering the new lease, but I'm only one of five. How would we, as a board, determine that?
Thank you, Mr. Wormers.
Hopefully, at the April 18th meeting, Dr. Stabler's going to give a presentation, putting a couple of things together. One is, what are the costs of rentals for the fields by all of the different organizations, and what do all the different organizations pay?
Ooh.
And how do they do that? And then, I think after that point, the board would need to give us some direction.
Very good.
That'll be on your April 18th agenda.
Looking, as usual, looking forward to Dr. Stabler's presentations. Okay, very good.
I'm more than three frames.
And Dr. Stowe, you can convey to Ms. Branch, one of the things I picked up from my experience with special ed is, we all agree, we have to do something, now the trick is to figure out who we are and what something costs, and that's, that's kind of the thing I'm at in this whole thing, so. Thank you, I'm done.
I would just like to thank her and all the work she did, and the people that helped her out, and sitting up in front of us for a while, that was probably pretty tough, so thank you very much for us.
Mr. Lee? No? Mrs. Reagans?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to say one other thing that I did receive at SoCal Rock that I will also make copies of and send to you all, is they created a history of the ownership of the SoCal Rock property, including the original deeds and documents.
Oh, I want to see that.
And information. I knew that was very much of interest to you, so I will make sure that you all get copies of this.
Are they found?
It's very interesting. It's signed by Superintendent Hall, and I think.
I met him. I met J.J. Hall.
And the.
Remember, he's superintendent when I was going to school there.
Really?
Yes.
And the representative of the JPA was Richardson, I think, maybe? It's interesting, the people who are on these documents.
That's great.
Yeah, pass it on, thanks.
Okay. If there's no further business, I would like to make a motion to adjourn in memoriam of retired bus driver Gertrude.
No, Bert Lynn, sorry. I apologize.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Reagans, but what were you going to say?
It was Bert Lynn, not Mr., not Dr. Richardson.
Oh, okay, all right. So, I will continue our adjournment in memoriam of retired bus driver Gertrude Bunny Hazel, retired teacher administrator Paul Hawkins, and special education teacher Lynn Ronald Harris. Meeting's adjourned.
Okay, we beat up to that.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Sally, if I give this to you, can you make copies for everybody?